Okay. This is the regular meeting of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment being held electronically via Zoom on August 26, 2020 at 7:30 PM. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the sunshine notice of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton Municipal Complex and by transmitting a copy of the notice to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on August 14, 2020, and has been posted to the municipal website, wwwprincetonnj.gov/meetings. Pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19 coronavirus, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular meetings of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, and was filed by the Clerk of Princeton on May 6, 2020. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton Municipal Complex and on the Princeton website and are maintained throughout the year, and by transmitting a copy of same to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, Comcast Media, and by filing a copy thereof with the Clerk of Princeton, notices have been placed on all window doors of the municipal complex. Okay. Claudia, can you call a roll?
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Ms. Colson?
Here.
Savage? Floyd? Trying to sign in. Floyd, can you hear us?
Who?
Mr. Floyd?
Yes, here. Here.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Here.
Tenenbaum?
Here.
Mr. Valvani?
Here.
Ken?
Here.
Okay. We're going to take, if nobody has any objection, we're going to take a few things out of order. The minutes, approval of the June 17 minutes will hold to the end of the meeting, and is there anybody in the audience who's here for the resolutions? If they can raise their hands. Claudia, is anybody indicated they're out there?
I have Mr. Sappas and Special for 6668 Wiggins.
I'm sorry?
6668 Wiggins, they're here now.
Okay. Well, what we want to try to do, let's take that one, and then we'll hold the rest till the end of the meeting. So let's just look at the resolution for 6668 Wiggins, Block 28.03, Lot 52, in the R4 Zone, Case Number Z1919789. We all have copies of the resolution. Have everybody had an opportunity to look at it? And if so, are there any comments on the resolution? If there are none, would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll move, Michael Floyd.
Second, Steven Schreiber.
Steve, you weren't at the meeting.
I withdraw that second.
Okay.
I'll second it, Eve Colson.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Colson?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Yes.
Valvani?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So what we're going to do is hold the remaining three resolutions to the end of the hearing, unless anybody has any objection. And, I don't know, Claudia, is there anybody out there that objects or wants to say something?
I see David Newton, but he's not responding to my chat. I don't know what he needs. Mr. Newton, if you can hear us, can you tell us what you need?
Isn't he on the Chambers Street app?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I just saw that.
He may have misunderstood the original question. That was my thought.
Okay, well, let's do this. Here's what we're going to do. We're going to start the applications right now, and we'll start with Case Z2020-836, 16 Chambers Street, Block 1902, Lot 16, in the CB Zone of the borough. Is the applicant and the applicant's attorney here? Are they, is anybody here representing that application?
Well, as Mr. Floyd said, David Newton's name is on some of the paperwork, so I wonder if he's just having trouble.
Now, they're on, they're in the question and answer chat. They're trying, I don't know why.
Hi, Latizia. The chat, just so everyone knows.
Yeah, they're here. The attorney's here. They all want to be, I think we got to let them in.
Yeah, the chat seems to be disabled, so if people are trying to chat, it might be because of that. But I think we're...
No, I saw their chats. It's on Q and A.
I'm definitely here.
There you are.
Hi, David.
Yes, thank you.
Can we get somehow, is Tom, can we get Tom Latizia in?
Yeah, he's here.
Oh, you are?
I see him.
Okay, all right. If you'd like to start, we're ready.
Steve, do you want to have Derek present his memo first?
Yes, probably, excuse me.
Okay. And Derek, before I swear you in, I'll just confirm that the noticing is in order and the board has jurisdiction to hear the application. Mr. Bridger, do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do. Excuse me, I thought the memo, the agenda was switched to have 374, the extension go first with Dino?
Okay.
Sorry.
Was it? You're right. Okay.
So I'm happy to, they're seeking an extension. Their approval expired.
Mr. Bridger, so we're at 374 Cherry Hill, and the noticing is also correct for that, and the board has jurisdiction.
Just a brief introduction, the applicant received approval November 9, actually in 2018, it expired November 9, 2019, and they're seeking extension retroactive for those improvements. I'll hand it over to Dino now he can explain the improvements and the reason for the extension. If there are any questions, I'm happy to respond. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dino Spatacini on behalf of the applicant for an extension request this evening. As Mr. Bridger explained, we're seeking a one-year application that would bring us out to November 9, 2020. As set forth in our submission, the ordinances allow for such an extension for good cause shown. The reason for the extension in this situation were visa issues for the applicant.
Mr. Spatacini, could you speak up? I'm having a really hard time hearing you.
Sure. Is that better?
Much better.
Okay, sorry about that. Boy, I've been accused of a lot of things, but not being quiet is not one of them. Sorry about that. So in any event, the ordinances, as you know, under both the borough and the township, allow for an extension, a one-year extension for good cause shown. The, as set forth in the papers that were submitted in our application, there were visa issues for the property owner, and they were uncertain as to what the status of their documentation was going to be so that they could work here. That was finally resolved in May of this year, 2020. So the hesitancy was with regard to making a large investment into their home that they may not be able to live in going forward. Those issues have all been resolved, and they're happy to be, know that they are going to be members of the community, and as a result, would like to make the investment into their home, that they can now deal with certainty. That said, I am happy to go back through the brief description, if you like, of the application, but it was basically for an expansion and variances. And Claudia, I don't know if you can pull it up, but the one engineering plan, and I'm going to show my age as far as my Zoom ability to pull it up, but there's one plan of the engineering plans, I believe it's either sheet three or four, four or four, that shows you the entire addition without getting back into the architecturals and all of that again, if it will help refresh everyone's memory. I know, Mr. Cohen, you were a board member at that time. Not sure how many other folks were still board members at that time, just because I can't see them all on the screen here, so. Ms. Colson, I believe you were.
Yes.
Yeah. Mr. Floyd, I'm not sure, to be perfectly honest with you, so.
Yeah, I was.
We can pull it up. We don't have to pull it up. It's up to the board's discretion. There we go. So if we go down to the third sheet, I believe, keep going, one more, fourth sheet. There you go. So that is the variance requested detail plan, which shows you, it has the elevations that have been copied from the architecturals, and it also shows you the proposed building addition behind the two-car garage and all the improvements along the property. And we're just asking for an extension of that. They have their contractor lined up, their permits are ready to go, they'll have no problem submitting same before the November deadline, and are excited about it. I'll provide as much information as the board likes, but I certainly don't want to waste your time, as I know you have a pretty packed agenda.
Steve, I'll move it if you want to get there.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the extension.
I move approval of the extension, Michael Floyd.
I'll second it, Eve Colson.
Yes.
Ms. Colson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Valvani?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Have a great evening.
Hey. Thank you. Okay. Derek, you want to go back to 16 Chambers?
Sure, thank you. The applicant is Chambers 16 LLC, they're the owner and the applicant, they're seeking a use variance pursuant to NJ SA 40,55D-71, which is a use that's not permitted in the zone. They were seeking a variance to permit a bank in the first floor of the CB Zone where such use is not permitted. Property is located in the CB Zone. The existing office use is illegal non-conforming use. Subject property was initially a firehouse that was owned by the former borough Princeton, the town sold it in 1993. Contract purchaser at that time applied to the zoning board for approval to convert the vacant firehouse to an office building with a roof garden in the front. The board approved the conversion. Wasn't able to find the site plan, but I was, I mean, the actual resolution, but I was able to find the minutes, and it was approved. The applicant is seeking approval now to utilize the existing 3,100 square foot first floor space as a bank. The plan's call for the open porch area on the second floor to be enclosed and converted to a floor area. This plus or minus 171 square foot addition will accommodate an elevator area and a hallway. The first floor was previously used as offices for the Glenn Mead Trust. The proposed retail bank use is not considered an office use, and as such, a use variance is required. And a variance under that section shall be granted only by the affirmative vote of at least five members. The board should, or the applicant should address the following special reasons to justify granting the relief requested as required by statute. These reasons must be shown to be unique or peculiar to the property for which variance is requested, and generally not applicable to neighboring properties. Reasons why this strict application of the zoning prohibition of the requested use or development would deprive the applicant of reasonable use of the land or buildings involved. And then evidence that the requested relief may be granted without detriment to the public good or the impairment of the intent of the zone plan, master plan and zoning ordinance. The applicant should describe how the proposal relates to the master plan, the proposal's impact on the neighborhood, the community's needs, and set forth a legal argument for the proposal. There's also a small side yard setback variance. Section 17A 311 allows for a zero setback, but requires a 10-foot setback if a setback is provided. The construction of the second floor addition on top of the existing first floor has a setback on the north of 8.5 inches and on the south of 6 inches. So the setback needs to be either 0 or 10, so a variance is required. And the proposed increase, addition is a small increase in the existing degree of noncompliance regarding the parking. There's no onsite parking, nor is any space available onsite for parking. It adds up a half the space. The slight increase in the parking requirement is a variance. If the board's inclined to approve the application, the board should grant a variance for the whole site, as it appears, none was granted in the 1993 approval. The application was reviewed by the Site Plan Review Advisory Board, and I will just go through some of the recommendations. Sprab endorsed the restoration of the red brick, the red brick on the upper story of the building. They suggested there be no whitewashing of the brick exterior or interior, as this would be less harmonious with the neighboring buildings. This is on the second floor. To ensure that the second-story brick in large cornice that protrudes from the sides of the addition show through the glass enclosure, opaque glass should not extend below the top of the cornice. Interior lighting of the corner should reinforce its visibility from the street. And Sprab recommends that the applicant provide for a review by the zoning board an alternative mullion layout that moves one mullion down to just above the top of the cornice and one mullion up, to just below the bottom of the cornice with the clear glass above and below. This should integrate the cornice line into the new facade. The entrance portico that was part of the previous addition was not found to be well proportioned. The applicant should consider altering the portico. The applicant was asked to present more and more designs that include much taller columns and a shorter architrave and frieze. The archway in the front plane could be raised above the fan window or replaced with a horizontal architrave as at 34 Chambers Street. The fragmented, partially arched recess panel should be eliminated. And finally, applicant should re-study how the front stair is reconfigured from the basement to the second floor, and show how a L U L A elevator could be inserted into the original three-story envelope to avoid extra demolition and reconstruction of the foundation below the one-story lobby. The elevator could be, also be entered directly from the ground floor lobby without entering the bank space. Plans for this revised design should be presented to the zoning board. That's the Sprab comments in my memo. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
Mr. Latizia, do you want to start?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the board. Tom Latizia with Trotman, Pepper, Hamilton, Sanders, representing Chambers 16 LLC, the applicant for this application. Very happy to see that everyone is safe and well. As was noted by Mr. Bridger, this is a minor site plan application together with D and C variance relief pertaining to the property located at 16 Chambers Street, known as Block 19.02, Lot 16, in the Central Business District of Princeton. You are probably familiar with the building. It was initially a firehouse owned by then Princeton Borough. It was sold in 1993 at auction to a buyer who applied to the zoning board for variances and site plan to convert the firehouse to an office building for a single office user, which turned out to be Glenn Mead Trust. Glenn Mead operated its financial institution slash bank offices out of the building for several years, but the space became vacant two years ago, and the current owners acquired it in September of 2019. The current owner's proposal is to make some minor improvements to the building in order to accommodate multiple tenants, specifically two tenant prospects who are eager to open their businesses in Princeton even during the pandemic, provided the required approvals from the municipality can be timely granted. One prospective tenant, as indicated by Mr. Bridger, is a retail bank to occupy the first floor of the building, and another is a women's health practice for the second floor space. The proposed bank use on the first floor requires a D1 or use variance from the zoning board, because Section 17A-305, paren B, closed paren four, of the Princeton Land Use Code prohibits banks or other financial institutions from the first floor of office buildings in the Central Business District. Remember, the board previously approved offices for a financial institution in this building. Mr. Derek has determined that leasing to a traditional retail bank requires a new variance approval. In order to accommodate the elevator and lobby area for the second-floor tenant, the owners propose to enclose the porch area on the second floor of the building, which is technically defined as floor area under the code. This second-floor addition totals 178 square feet. And that is the extent of the external site improvements. Besides the use variance that I mentioned for the bank use on the first floor, there are two relatively minor bulk or C variances being requested. One side yard setback variances from Section 17A-311 of the code, which requires a zero setback or 10 feet if a setback is to be provided. The existing building is 10 inches setback to the north side and 10 inches on the south side, and thus is an existing nonconforming structure. Adding the second-floor addition on top of the first floor does require a setback variance, for it will be step back eight and a half inches at the north side and 6 inches on the south side. This essentially matches the existing building setback. The second C variance is from Section 17A-316 of the code for a half of a parking space requirement because of the additional 178 square feet of floor area being added. While technically considered floor area, the 178 square feet is comprised mainly of the elevator shaft and its access, so it does not really add any occupancy, at most a de minimis 74 square feet. There are no, there is no onsite parking at the property, as was the case with the prior approvals were granted. Parking will be on the street where allowed or in nearby public garages or lots. And that is really the extent of the project. It is a relatively minor proposal, but an important one for attracting new businesses into Princeton. We should all feel fortunate that there are building owners willing to make a significant investment in their properties at this time during the current COVID health emergency in order to stir economic activity within Princeton. And, Mr. Chairman, I will be presenting three witnesses to support this application. If it is acceptable to you, I would prefer to make our entire presentation than answer questions from the board and the public, but obviously that's up to you, if you want to ask questions after each witness. It may go smoother, and we may be able to answer a lot of the questions on people's minds if you allow us to just go through the entire presentation.
All right, let's proceed that way, and we'll see if there are any significant need to answer questions earlier.
We appreciate that. So unless there's preliminary questions for me, I will call my first witness, Mr. David Newton.
Mr. Newton, we need to swear you in. Do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Newton, can you state your full name for the reference?
My name's David, David Simon Newton. I live at 49 Governor's Lane in Princeton, New Jersey.
And, Mr. Newton, I think most members, as well as the public, are, know you, because you've been a fixture in Princeton for a long time, but perhaps you could just briefly go through your, both your educational and professional experience, please.
Yeah, actually, I was just thinking that the, and thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and it's nice to be back in front of your board. The first time I appeared in front of your board, I was a punk of 28 years old, and now I just turned, my age currently is the subject of a Beatles song, so I've been kind of prowling around the downtown for many years. That, after a, an education at the University of Pennsylvania, my family and I moved up to Princeton in 1983, and the family had been in the real estate business, and we purchased our first building, which actually happens to be the next door neighbor to this building, 22 Chambers Street, in 1984, which was then occupied by an investment bank called the William Sword Company. Following that, in 1985 and 1986, my father never could kind of really understand the difference between English high streets and American real estate, and what I think he saw in Princeton was something that reflected that English high street, and we were lucky enough to be able to buy the 92 Nassau Street building known as Lower Pine, which we renovated and leased in 1986 to Hamilton Jewelers, who are still, as you all know, in operation there today. We've had some other activity, but from the years 1995 until the year 2016, almost 21 years, I managed Palmer Square and was responsible for the office retail and residential leasing and management of that property. And many of the retailers and the office tenants who are still at the premises, a result of the work that I was involved in, and I don't want to get into too many names, but everything from Jazams to J. Crew to Ralph Lauren to the Bent... to Ralph Lauren, to the Bentspoon, were all the deals that I'd been involved with. After leaving Palmer Square, after those 21 wonderful years, the group who I've always been part of, consisting also of two Princeton residents, Martin Khan and Stephen Gilbert, we got together again, even though we'd always owned stuff together. And we came across the 16 Chamber Street building that at that stage was in the process of being of up for sale. Interestingly enough, that the last office deal I had did on Palmer Square in 2016 was leasing the Glenn Me to the Glenn Me Trust, an eight or nine thousand square foot suite of 47 Hulfrich Street. Glenn Me deciding that they didn't really want to be in a vertical situation on three floors and rather deciding to operate horizontally on a single level. So as a result, the reason I was a little bit responsible for the building being vacant, but my knowledge and my faith in Princeton Real Estate was as such, we gave an offer to the current owner who had been the developer of the building or the redeveloped from the firehouse back in 93, 94. And we gave him an offer and we came to a deal and we purchased the building. And we're very happy with our purchase. I think it would be true to say that the one little surprise that we had is that the building when as renovated was very much for the use of a single tenant. And our desire, even though we entered the transaction with a desire to lease to anybody who wanted to take the space from us, the desire, as it turned out, was to look for certainly a minimum of three tenants on, for the ground floor, the second floor and for the lower level. The building needs to be contemporized, which involves putting in a, an ADA compliant elevator and also a staircase to the second floor. The building is a very attractive building, both inside and out, where the truth is that it hasn't been touched since 1995. And as we all know, times have changed. So with that, we purchased the building. I did my normal approach to leasing, which was offering it through Mr. Fenley and through my own contacts to everybody we could, we could find who had talked to us. And we settled upon two tenants. One, as you indicated, Mr. Lutizia, is a bank and the other one is called Kindbody, which is a company that has come to Princeton to specialize mainly on women's health issues. It has a contract with the university. And a lot of their work is fertility directed. And they will be opening their doors in the building within, within the next few weeks.
Oh, Mr. Newton, you mentioned about the marketing efforts to lease this building. Can you be a little more specific about what kind of responses you received, particularly in, since we're asking for a use variance for a first floor bank, whether you had any interest from retail?
As I indicated, my approach to, and I'm not saying it's the correct approach, but it's the approach that I've applied. My approach has always been to offer the space to anybody and everyone. So as it probably hasn't passed the attention of many people on the board, there was obviously a lot of interest on the part of psych, this was before COVID, a lot of interest on the part of psychologists who knew that they would be leaving 20 Nassau Street. And we certainly talked to a lot of psychologists. We offered the building to a series of other users or many of whom would have also involved application to the board for change. But we settled on this use. I've always felt, after my experience at Palmer Square, my experience with 22 Chamber Street. If you look at Chamber Street and without trying to aggrandize myself or for that matter Princeton, even though Princeton's much grander than I am, I've always thought of Chamber Street as a minor microcosm of Wall Street, where the financial uses tend to take center stage to retail uses. That's not to say there haven't been retail stores on Chamber Street. The hotel, the Graduate Hotel will involve those spaces being merged into the hotel. But it hasn't been considered a, a significant retail street. Rather, on the financial side, as indicated, you had originally William Sword in the 22 Chamber Street building. We sold the building to the university who put their endowment into 22 Chamber Street where it still exists today. Next door to that, you had is originally Henderson Realtors, who are now part of Callaway Henderson. And then they leased the space to, again, to the university, which is used for their entrepreneurial center, the Keller Center. Since then, you have also granted relief. We granted relief in 2009 so that Bank of Princeton could open on that street. And then more recently, you granted relief to the Bryn Mawr Trust who opened on the corner of Chambers and Hulfrich Street. So, and along with the Glenn Me Trust, I think it would be true to say that the orientation of Chamber Street has always been more financial than it has really retail. I didn't, does that answer your question, Tom?
Yes, but just to pry a little bit more, in terms of interest from retailers, did you receive any interest?
We received no interest from retailers. We received one interest from a restaurant which had a liquor license, but it was nothing more than just a fleeting interest. I won't, I won't be giving out any names. Okay.
Well, in your view, do you believe the building itself has certain impediments?
I believe, I believe this, that the, the building, other than the street location, we have no windows on the side of the building. And indeed, that our, our common wall with Graduate Hotel, where there's even some skylights for the basement area will now be disappearing with the way the graduate has planned there, has planned or is designing their particular building. The building, I think, was always orientated to be a bank or a financial use building. And again, I can be castigated for not reading my zoning properly, but I was pretty sure when we purchased a building that we were, we bought a bank building only to be informed by Derek that this actually wasn't the case. And that even though Glenn Me Trust operated pretty much as a bank on the ground level for 25 years, that Mr. Bridger told me that that is considered an office use rather than a bank use. So, so again, in answer to your question, Tom, we, we offered the building to probably a couple of hundred tenants. And this, this is the use that we've decided that works best for us, for our investment strategy. We believe that it works well for the town in the buildings that we have been involved with. And this is what we're coming to the board with.
Is there any ability to make deliveries from the rear of the building?
Absolutely none.
So all deliveries and service?
Everything has to be serviced through the front of the building. In the back of the building, there's a small garden and there's a step up. You have to actually access it through the university, the university driveway of 22 Chamber Street.
And there's no access on other side of the building, correct?
Absolutely no access on other sides of the building.
Okay, I think I have no further questions for Mr. Newton. I'll call my second witness, Joshua Zinder.
Mr. Zinder, we need to swear you in. Do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Absolutely. Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, well, first I'll have Mr. Zinder identify himself fully and give his business address.
Hello, I'm Joshua Zinder. I'm the managing partner, Joshua's in architecture and design in Princeton, New Jersey, 20 Nassau Street, Suite 25. You want me to go through my credentials or?
Well, I'll first ask the chair whether he believes that's necessary, given Mr. Zinder's regular appearance before the zoning board.
Very true. Yeah, we're, I'm comfortable with his qualifications.
All right. So he's being offered as an expert in architecture.
Fine.
I, to share my screen, I just clicked share a screen here. Okay. So I'm going to pull up some information. Sure. Okay. Thank you for having us tonight. Hope everyone is staying safe and healthy. Here you see the existing 16 Chamber Street building. The goal for this project was to modernize the building, improve the infrastructure and provide an overall facelift and prepare the building for new tenancy. The building was a single use occupancy and needed to have alterations to multi-tenant the building. A new bank on the ground floor, a women's health clinic on the second floor and possibly a yoga studio or other use in the basement level. To this, we needed to add an elevator. To do this, we needed to add an elevator. Both prime tenants required the maintenance of the existing floor space in order to accept the lease as a result. The only option for creating accessibility was to add the elevator outside of the existing usable square footage, which I'll explain a little bit more later on. An elevator could not be added to the back of the building as there were multiple tenants and someone with a disability could not cross through a bank space to get to the rear, to get to the other floors of the, for the other tenants. So the elevator had to be added to the front. As a result, these challenges and the challenge of tenancy, these days in general, we created a design that is modern, accessible and leverages the existing form of the building to maximize its utility and still work with the scale of the adjacent structures and context.
Mr. Lutizia, do you want to mark this as an exhibit?
Oh, yes. So thank you, Ms. Casey, for reminding me. This is a PowerPoint presentation consisting of a number of slides. I don't know how many Mr. Zinder could tell us. So we can mark the entire?
Thirty-seven slides.
Okay.
And, and I believe it was labeled Exhibit A1 when we submitted it last week.
Okay, thank you.
So the site adjacent the site has a long and varied history. Until around 1920, the site was occupied by Village Victorians, which you see here on the right. On the sandboard map here, you see that originally the Fire Engine Company was actually across the street from, from the current location. And in, from the 1910s, the house that sat on the property, this is 1910 when the house was on the property. Some of you may recall the Mercer Engine Company building that was built in 1993. Here you can see it in a photo from 1988. This is the core of our existing structure.
Mrs. Zinder, you meant to say 1933, correct?
I thought, well.
Or 34, whatever.
Well, the building was built in 1933, constructed in 1933. And this photograph on the left here is from 1988 that shows the, the fire engines coming out of it.
Right.
The building was altered for Glenn Me Trust, a bank for high-end clientele, and was a single use occupancy. They occupied all three floors. You can still see the five window and the intallature of the Mercer Engine Company. So the five windows that are up here and the intallature were, were part of the original Mercer Engine Company. The site is a short walk to the entire town and the university, including the dinghy station, which is one of the reasons why it's a a property of interest for, for tenancy. Here's the site in the Central Business District. When we take a closer look at the immediate neighborhood, you can see that other structures that are along the street that are banks or contain first floor offices. This neighborhood has always been a financial bank and ground floor office area within, within this area and has had minimal retail. The change to a retail bank from an office bank improves, would improve the street life in general. So, you know, one of the reasons why retail is desired is to get people onto the street and an office bank doesn't have as many visitors as a retail bank might have. So this is clearly would be an improvement. Here you see the existing building volumetrically. The first thing we are looking to do is to return the upper facade here to brick. Then we will be inserting the elevator shaft, connecting the basement and the second floor and providing full accessibility for the entire building. Enclosing the second floor roof area with a window curtain wall system. This will create a second floor elevator lobby, provide enclosure and transparency. Please note that we are aligning the glass structure, the corners here, okay, with the existing brick structure below. And this is important when you, when you understand the setbacks variance that we're requesting. Because we are aligning with the architecture, it's resulting in our need for that variance. We've also taken Sprab's comments into account and altered the mullion system, which I'll talk about a little bit later as well, to align with the existing intallature and, and remove the lower mullion. Finally, there will be some interior modifications to the second, for the, to account for the second floor tenant. Some of that is still to be determined. One of the primary critiques from Sprab was that we were locating the elevator in the glass lobby area and they had preferred that we located it somewhere back in the building. So we went back and we analyzed some earlier designs and some earlier thoughts that we had on the building and looked at putting the elevator in different locations. Placing it in the back where the existing stair already goes to three stories in the area here. This would only be possible if the building was a single tenant. The fact that the building is going to be multi-tenanted will effectively prevent the elevator from going back here. If somebody needed to use that elevator, they would have to get access through the middle of the bank to get to the elevator for the floors above and below. And in a multi-tenant situation, it just will not work. No bank is going to grant access through their building at 4:30 or 5 o'clock to get up to a second floor tenant for handicapped accessibility. Pulling the stair inside, but closer to the front also does not work. It would effectively create a much larger foyer area and reduce the square footage, the rentable square footage available for the bank. And as a result, lose the tenant for our client. And in return, and in turn, provide a total square footage for the bank that would be below what typical banks are looking for. You know, they're looking for a range of square footage. And by putting the elevator in this location or at this depth into the building, we would lose that, the ability to get banks into the space. Finally, we looked at inserting the elevator into the existing stair, as I believe was noted in the, in the report. And we, we took a really careful look at this. The, you know, in a multi-tenant situation, this stair is actually being extended up to the third floor to allow for proper egress. The elevator simply does not fit into the opening, the stair center. Putting it at the edge also does not allow the stair to exist in the same volume. Putting it at the edge also does not allow the stair to exist in the same volume. An elevator in this location would require a larger opening through the building than the existing stair and would cut into the tenant's base on all three floors. The variances, excuse me, the variances that we are presented with on this project are truly de minimis. The new second floor elevator lobby square footage requires that we add 0.5 of a parking space to the building. The building occupancy will not be changing as a result of this additional square footage. This is simply a lobby and a space for accessibility. So lobby and an elevator, that space there. So there's no real impact on parking. As I noted, we aligned the window system with the brick below, which happens to be inset from the property line, eight and a half inches and six inches respectively. And as it is not on the property line and not 10 feet in from the property line, as such requires a variance. Finally, we are replacing a ground floor office bank with a retail bank. It should be noted that the building form as it is would not work well with other retail or, or typical ground or typical ground floor uses such as restaurants or retail as this entry lobby really prevents, it creates a barrier for access for the typical retail or food venues. A shared lobby space for a building is typical setup for a bank offering a space to access for ATM or, or paper or additional stuff that supports the bank itself and can also provide access for the other tenants. Here you see the existing structure as viewed from the north and the east. And here is an aerial view from above. You can see it sandwiched between the access drive, the loading drive for 20 Nassau and the access parking lot for 22 Chambers. And again, here is the site plan showing the lot between the driveway here for 22 Nassau and the parking lot for, excuse me, for 20 Nassau and the parking lot for 22 Chambers. Here's the building as we designed in the streetscape and the context and scale of the adjacent structures. The materials we will be using on the building primarily consist of really the existing brick, matching the existing brick and having clear and a frosted glass. At Sprab's request, we are eliminating the whitewash of the exterior brick that we had originally planned. Here you see the elevation with the frosted and clear glass and the whitewashed brick as we had presented, previously presented to Sprab. So there was a lower section that had frosting, a clear section of frosting above and the clear glass in between. And this is based on their comments. We have realigned the mullions to align with the intallature here. And so the mullions align with the intallature across the face of the building. And we've eliminated the frosted, frosted lower level to allow for better visual communication into the second floor lobby and architectural accents. Their request that we move, that we remove and re-proportion the entry accent, the entry area, which is this with the two columns and the large masonry element above is simply not possible. In addition, the bank tenants feel that these classical elements of the entryway are one of the reasons that makes this building feel like a home for a financial institution and they would rather we not alter it. The basement floor plan, which we'll, it shows that we'll be providing, the elevator will go down to the basement and it'll provide handicap accessibility to this floor. We will be utilizing underpinning and shoring to allow us to construct under the existing structure. The first floor plan of the bank and updated entry lobby, you can note that the banks that, that have been considered for the space and, and that they're looking at, excuse me, the banks that we have been speaking with, they are looking at this as a bank of the next century, not as the last. And there are teller pods and an open layout. This is, you know, not your traditional teller counter. More of a hospitality model, let's just say, a more open and accessible bank. The second floor tenant, which will be a women's health clinic, which prompted the necessity for the elevator for accessibility will be on, on the second floor. Then you have the roof plan. Here we have an aerial from the southeast as it currently exists.
Gosh.
Yep.
Can I have you go back to the first floor plan?
Sure.
Maybe you could just go in a little more detail about the different uses that are going on here and what each, it looks like there's some offices in this space, correct?
Yeah, there, there are, there are some offices and these are actually meeting rooms for, there's an office here and these are meeting rooms for the bank personnel to meet with people coming in. This is a, a single teller pod. There, there could be one or two of these depending on the, on the, the particular bank and depending on the final layout. But the idea here is that the tellers are not behind glass, that they're, that it's open and it's more of a hospitality model. There's some lounge furniture in here as well. There's a kitchenette for the employees here, bathrooms in the back. And then there'll also be, you know, some ATMs within the bank and ATM out in the, in the lobby area.
Will there be a night deposit box, I believe, as well?
I believe there is a box as well, but yeah, that'll depend on the final bank selection. So again, here's aerial from the southeast as we have proposed. Aerial from the north as it currently exists. And as we are proposing it, the existing street view from across the street on Chambers near Nassau Street as it currently exists. And the proposed street view from across the street on Chambers near Nassau Street. And here is the existing street view from across the street to the north on Chambers towards Hullfish. And the proposed street view from across the street to the north on Chambers towards Hullfish. Now, excuse me. This is the street view from across the street to the north on Chambers closer to Hullfish, looking back towards Nassau. And I believe our planner is going to talk now, Tom?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Zinder. Our last witness is James Kyle, professional planner. Jim?
If you would raise your right hand, you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Kyle, please provide your full name and address, business address for the board, please.
Sure, it's James Kyle, K-Y-L-E is the last name. It's Kyle McManus Associates. We're at 2 East Broad Street in Hopewell, New Jersey.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Kyle has appeared before this board a number of occasions, I think most recently last month, and he was accepted as an expert in land use planning.
We would, we would accept him.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Perhaps we can start at your preparation, Mr. Kyle. What is your role with respect to this application?
So I was retained by the applicant to review the planning and zoning issues associated with the proposal at hand. Met with the, the client and the team many times. We've discussed the application and the proposal. Reviewed all the plans and application materials, also reviewed Mr. Bridger's memo, also conducted field investigation of, of the site on a couple of occasions.
Can you first start out in summarizing for the board the variance relief being requested?
Sure. So the first is, is a D1 variance to permit a retail bank or a bank on the ground floor. The CB district does allow banks, but they are not permitted on the first floor. And then as Mr. Zinder had also indicated, there are two bulk variances related to the side yard setback. Zero feet is permitted, but if you don't have zero feet, you have to be a 10. So since the building is set back eight and a half inches and six inches respectively, that does require relief. And then finally, the additional parking that's created by the addition of the floor area of about a half a space, we're also requesting a variance for not providing that.
Can you describe the current zoning of the site?
Yes, as we've talked about, it's in, it's in the CB, the central business zone. And as I said, while banks are permitted, they're just not permitted on the first floor.
So what is the criteria that the applicant for a D1 variance must demonstrate for the board?
So as Mr. Bridger had outlined, and as the board has heard many times, we're required to demonstrate both the positive and negative criteria. And on the negative criteria, we have to demonstrate what's called the enhanced quality of proof under the court case Medici BPR. And that's that the grant of the variance is not inconsistent with the intent purpose of the zone plan. And that proof has to reconcile the governing body's continued omission of the use as being permitted in the zone.
So let's start with the positive criteria. Have you reached certain conclusions on whether the requested use variance satisfies that criteria?
I have. So let's just talk about the positive criteria. I think, first of all, that the public welfare is promoted because the site's particularly suited to this use. So we have a location in the central business district. It's away from the traditional retail core that we have at Palmer Square, also Hullfish, Witherspoon and Nassau Street. So this application of the grant of the variance here doesn't detract from the focus of retail efforts in the downtown. We also, as we've talked about with other witnesses, this is located in an area that has mostly been office and other non-retail operations on the first. So it's generally consistent with the character of what we see along Chamber Street. We also have a location in the building that's really better suited to a bank use on the first floor. Retrofitting this building for a traditional storefront would be difficult, as Mr. Zinder talked about, and it would require a large-scale change to the entire facade. It's also difficult, given the fact the building doesn't have access to the rear. It makes loading and deliveries very difficult and it's really restricted. So any loading would have to occur on the street. And as we all know, Chamber Street is just not very wide here, so I don't think that would be a very desirable situation. We also have a location where a financial office had previously existed and it's really carrying out similar functions. So while the proposed bank will have, you know, typical functions like an ATM and night deposit, the interior layout will function more like the financial offices that existed here previously. As Mr. Zinder had also noted, as a retail bank, it will also continue to draw foot traffic into the area, which I think really meets the intent of having first-floor retail uses in the district. So I think for those reasons, the site in this building is particularly suited to the use that we're proposing. Just to further the positive criteria, I think there's also purposes of the municipal land use law that are promoted by the grant of the variance. First is Purpose A to promote the public health, safety and general welfare. This provides an adaptive reuse of a building that, as you heard Mr. Newton discuss, has been troublesome to leases as a single-tenant building. It puts the building back into productive use with a bank that will draw foot traffic into the district and it helps support and doesn't detract from the other retail areas that we have in Palmer Square and the other streets that I have described before. Also Purpose G to provide sufficient space and appropriate locations for a variety of uses. I think the location's appropriate based on the fact that we had an office or financial service use that existed here in the building since its conversion in 1993. I think also Purpose M, which really speaks to the efficient use of land. I think this makes efficient use of a building and a site that again is not well-suited to a retail use on the ground floor. So I think for those reasons, we can meet the positive criteria for the D1 use variance. Excuse me.
Let's turn to the negative criteria that you mentioned. Do you have a professional opinion on whether or not this application meets that criteria?
I do. So addressing the first prong of the negative criteria, which is any potential impact of the variance on surrounding properties. As I said, this use is consistent with what previously existed here and we don't feel it'll have any more or less impact than that use that had existed since 1993. Also, the use is compatible with those surroundings, as we've talked about. The types of uses that we have and kind of the distinct lack of other ground-floor retail, not to say that there isn't any ground-floor retail here, but primarily we have first-floor non-retail and office uses here. So I think it's essentially compatible with most of the surrounding uses that we have in, in that case. Now, as far as the enhanced quality of proof that's required under Medici, addressing the intent and purpose of the zone plan. While there's no specific purpose statement for the central business district and the zoning ordinances, excuse me, zoning ordinance, there are purposes listed in that ordinance. They're kind of numerous. I'm not going to read through all of them. So I'm just going to scan really quick and see if I can find. One second. Yeah, so, so as I read these, this really comes out of section 17A-200. These are kind of just general purposes of the ordinance. And in my read of these, without going through them in detail, there are really none of these that are kind of negatively impacted by the grant of the variance here. And then reviewing the master plan, if you look and I've read the 1996 master plan, that's really where the rationale for having only ground-floor retail uses was established first. But then as we kind of go through and we come to the 2017 reexamination report, it discusses the fact that the retail environment has really become challenging in, in the central business district with the advent of online shopping and delivery. That's really the, those are kind of the exact words that are used in that reexam. And in 2020, these challenges have really been underscored by the COVID pandemic. Even before COVID, the retail market continued to struggle. So I think if, if anyone's walked through the downtown, particularly on Hullfish, you know, a number of vacancies in, in that building that's along there. Also, if you look in Palmer Square, there are a few stores that are vacant there. So that really kind of illustrates the struggle that the retail market has and likely will continue to have. Because even if COVID, if and when, hopefully COVID goes away, we'll, we'll still have that concern that was identified in the reexamination report of online shopping and delivery, which is really only accelerated over the last three or four or five years. So as we look at how that discussion evolved in that acknowledgement in 2017 reexam, it really stresses how the market has changed and likely how it will continue to change in the coming years. And as I talked about, you know, there are a number of vacancies, you know, some of which may have been related to the pandemic and the inability to operate the same way they were. But even before COVID, again, there were some retail struggles there. So I think when you take that all together, I think that, it's my opinion that the grant of the variance here is not inconsistent with the intent purpose of the zone plan. I think this proposal really responds to the evolution of the retail market in the municipality and it doesn't really negatively impact the continuation of retail in other areas where it's currently focused. So again, we're not going to take away from other opportunities in places that I think are probably more important than Chamber Street for ground-floor retail. So continuing to support Palmer Square, all the buildings along Hullfish Street as well, so we can really focus efforts on, on that and getting those spaces rented. I think the board can reconcile the grant of the variance here based on the fact that this building has long been utilized for non-retail uses on the ground floor. The building's not particularly well-suited for retail based on the existing facade and the lack of loading at the rear. And the location on Chamber Street, again, for loading will be particularly challenging for any type of retail use or even if we were able to attract a restaurant tenant, it wouldn't easily permit loading. The other thing is, as we talked about, the retail bank will, I think, continue to meet the intent of ground-floor retail and the idea is to get people in shopping, walking around in the center of town in the central business district. And the retail bank has that component that will continue to draw foot traffic to the area. People coming, college students, you know, people that live in town walking to the bank, it'll still meet that intent. So I think based on that, we can meet the negative criteria and we can also meet the Medici enhanced quality of proof that's required.
Thank you, Mr. Kyle. Now I'd like to turn your attention to the bulk variance relief being requested. And the first one has to do with the side yard setbacks.
Correct. So I, I think this meets both the C1 and the C2 criteria, meets the C1 criteria in that the position and configuration of the building makes compliance with this requirement a practical difficulty. As Mr. Zinder said, we need to align the addition with the brick that's underneath and you can kind of see that in this photograph that's still on the screen. So that requires that we inset that from. So that requires that we inset that from the exterior wall that you can see kind of behind that. So I think it's that positioning of the building and the existing configuration that makes achieving that standard a practical difficulty. I think here it also meets C two criteria as well, promotes the public welfare, and also purpose I to promote a desirable visual environment. First off, this will allow us to make the building fully handicap accessible. I think Mr. Zinder did a great job of explaining the difficulties in placing that elevator shaft other places in the building, just for access in a multi-tenant situation. But this also provides a consistent appearance to the building based on the existing configuration. If we were to try to bring these sidewalks into ten feet to comply with that requirement, it would result in a building that would not be consistent with the other architecture that we have in the area, and it would kind of be an odd appearance, I would say. So I think we can meet the positive criteria on those two bases. In terms of the negative, the setback here, it's a minor departure. It shouldn't substantially impact any neighboring properties. We're consistent. Maintaining a consistent setback for the entire structure. And really utilizing the glass panels as we've had will kind of maintain an open feel for the for the front of the structure. And as far as the intent and purpose of the zone plan and the zoning ordinance, there's no, you know, specific rationale for the purpose of setback standards, really, in any master plan I've ever reviewed. And it's likely not intended to address a situation like this. It's more for the creation of a new structure in the central business district. Generally speaking, setbacks are intended to address light air and open space between neighboring properties. I think here, the addition of the the design of the addition and its open nature is important. Along with the fact that we're respecting that consistent setback that's established. So I don't think there should be any substantial detriment to the intent of those setback standards, given the nature of the proposal in the existing building.
Thank you. And now, lastly, the parking variance.
Yeah, and I think this one kind of squarely fits in the C one criteria, as Mr. Bridger had pointed out, and as we've discussed, there's really no ability to provide any off-street parking with this proposal. We can't get access to the rear of the building to park cars there, and it's a relatively small area. So I think it's it's pretty easy to come to the conclusion that it's impractical to think that you could provide additional parking on the site. In terms of the negative criteria, there shouldn't be any substantial impact to neighboring properties. Again, we're talking about space that we're adding that's largely unoccupied space, so there won't be any desks or chairs or anything there. It's really designed to accommodate the elevator configuration, as well as to provide access to the second floor tenant. So I don't think there's any substantial impact to surrounding properties there. And then I did take an opportunity to review the two thousand seventeen parking study that the municipality had prepared, and the bottom line there on that study was that they felt that parking capacity was more than sufficient in this area. They particularly keyed in on the Chamber Street garage, which is publicly available parking. And noted that there was plenty of capacity in that structure. Particularly during weekdays. So when we think about the normal days of operation for the bank. And then even with weekend operations, the observations of that study were that the peak parking demand on weekends was Saturday about seven PM. And generally, banks, financial institutions are closing around one at the latest two o'clock on a Saturday, and they're not open on Sunday. The parking study also noted that even with aggressive assumptions about future growth in the central business district, their assessment was that there would still be adequate parking supply. So I think in terms of any potential impairment to the intent of providing adequate parking. I think we can say that it won't rise to the level of being substantial in that there's a strong feeling from the study that there is adequate parking supply in the area. So I think particularly when we're only talking about a half a space additional, there shouldn't be any substantial impairment to that intent.
Thank you, Mr. Kyle.
Sure.
Mr. Cohen, that completes our direct presentation. We're now available for questions.
I have one other.
Oh, I'm sorry, Josh. Didn't mean to to cut you out. We're going to go back now to Mr. Zinder.
Okay, so in conclusion, in looking at this view of Chamber Street. We can see that we are working with the scale of the streetscape. There is no impact on the neighbors. Our intervention does not alter the light and air on the street. The glass box we add to the top of the entry allows us to maximize the utility of the site and building by providing space for accessibility of all the floors. The modern intervention contributes a desirable visual landscape through creative development techniques and a sensitivity of scale by maintaining the line of the brick below and not exceeding the roof line above. We also do not exceed the allowable FAR. And in turn, this design adds to the rich architectural quilt that is downtown Princeton. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Josh. Mr. Chairman, that now completes our direct presentation, and we are available for questioning.
Okay, do any of the board members have any questions of any of the witnesses? Anyone?
I have one. Steven Tribber.
Yes.
Mr. Newton, I was wondering, you referred to the Graduate Hotel tenants. When the Graduate Hotel was first announced, there was a great outcry about what's going to happen to all the people that are housed in there. Did you ever consider just building office space within the in this space and just renting it out?
Actually, the etymology of that is kind of, I don't want to bore you too long, but it was there's a story behind that where there was an initial outcry, but the funny thing is that Palmer Square took a lot of slack of the slack of tenants who came out, coming out of twenty twenty Nassau Street. But let me give you an example of my own experiences. So the answer is yes, and we were thinking of leasing, I think, at one stage to as many as seventeen or eighteen separate psychologists. But then I decided I liked my own hair too much and but managing eighteen separate tenants is very different than managing three separate tenants. So we decided that we would try a different approach. And as it happened, the slack was taken up, I think, by Palmer Square, who put a significant number of psychologists into their buildings, thirty-two Nassau Street. And then, when COVID came along. And let me just give you this. I have a tenant. Many of you will know him, a tenant at ninety-two Nassau Street by the name of Elliot Gersky. And Elliot told me actually about two or three couple of months ago. He said, you know, I've been your building in this, I've been your tenant in this building, David, since nineteen eighty-nine. And frankly, when the pandemic came along. And I realized that I can do what I do out of home, pretty much thanks to Zoom and online meetings. And and the fact is, it's one profession who I don't think actually, there may obviously be some people who may need to stay in very close proximity to the university. But the actual need of psychologists and psychiatrists and mental health professionals being in the downtown isn't as great as it was before March thirteenth or March fifteenth. Does that answer your question?
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a question. Am I am I muted or am I?
No, we can hear you, but speak up.
Yeah, it has to do with the the COVID thing. What's the situation in terms of the heating and ventilation? Have you? Deal with that?
I can. You're talking about in the building itself?
Yes.
Yeah, so the HAC systems are going to be upgraded with each of the tenants as the tenants come in.
Any particular filtration or?
It's dependent on the the tenant use and certainly, we're going to be discussing different filtration systems with them. But there's different costs involved with UV and with ionization systems and other things like that. So that's certainly going to be part of the discussions. It's we're not there yet. We need to have approval today before we can start to talk about.
Thank you.
Other comments? Well, I have a few. I guess, Mr. Zinder, the first one is the Lula elevator. Have you confirmed with the, I don't know who reviews this, does the municipality building department review this, or just go to the state?
This will be, this should be reviewed by the municipality.
Okay, have you confirmed the use of the Lula elevator with them?
We've we've reviewed the use of the Lula elevator in this particular case with the town, and we've also talked to DCA about about the, if this is an acceptable use. And we had a long debate, and in the end, it was determined that this is an acceptable elevator for this kind of condition, yes.
Okay. In the alternative elevator locations that you identified. The one you didn't show was the front right corner of the building where your ATM machine is located. Which, in my opinion, is the logical place for the elevator. Did you consider that?
Yes, we did consider that. And the challenge there was a reduction of the square footage of the bank square, the bank area. And they were at they were at the minimum, and we began to reduce their square footage anymore, then they would start to look for other locations. So we had to maintain the minimum square footage that we had there. Now, we could have, we could have put it there. You know. But again, you know, the the elevator, it's mechanical, we would have eaten into that that square footage. In addition, the the way the layout works out, the handicap ramp, we can't get it to wrap around on the left side the same way as we can on the right side. And so remember that the you're coming in at twelve inches. The bank is actually twelve inches higher than grade at that point. And so even though we have the elevator covering the three floors, we still need to make up that extra twelve inches. And and the ramp, as it comes around, would block the access to the egress stair. So we did spend a considerable amount of time looking at where the the elevator and the stairs and the access and all this could work and you know, in the in the end, this was the only route that we could get to work, and we tried. I think we presented six or seven different schemes to to the owners, and the only one that would accommodate the multi-tenant situation as it stands and get full accessibility was this one.
Yeah, I noticed this, the elevator location was a comment of Sprab's. I actually agree with him on that, but you know, I'll defer to you, but I I think that the the loss of probably less than seventy square feet doesn't seem that onerous to me, but that again is your decision.
I can, yeah, I can just show you the other, the other main issue is the the handicap ramp that we have. So right now, you're coming in. You make a right turn up the ramp, six inches and another six, six inches to get into the bank level.
Yes.
If we were to mirror the situation and put the Lula where the ATM is.
Yes.
A few things would happen. But the biggest issue is we no longer have the ability to get the ramp in and get access to this there. The ramp, the situation, the ramp, and the door, the egress door conflict. And so there was no way we could get the elevator in that location and get the ramp to work.
All right, if you say so. I, again, I, to me, it would work, but that's that's your decision. I just think that the loss, like I said, the loss of seventy square feet, and then the then the necessity to not increase the degree of non-compliance with the second floor addition. Would seem to be a reasonable trade-off, but again, it's your decision, but I would tend to agree with Sprab on that. Let's see. On your elevation, just, I noticed on the front elevation, you showed that the cornice on the building seems to project out over the side yard property lines. Is that right? I mean, again, it's an existing situation, but but do they?
Let me zoom in. You can zoom in.
Well, show the front elevation. The front elevation, that drawing.
Yeah, so I'll show you the front elevation, but
Yeah, at the top. They they project over the property lines. Yes?
Yes.
Okay. And obviously, since nineteen thirty-three, that hasn't been an issue. So, all right, I just noticed that. So the big, the one big issue, did you discuss the the rear access stair with the fire department? Because basically you have no ability to get people out in the event of a fire. People will, if they're using that rear stair. They have no place to go. They they have to, they're in the backyard, and there's no access to the public way from there.
Well, that that is, that is true. There is physical access. You could hop down the small log wall that's up against the twenty-two Chambers site. I think it's about three and a half feet difference in in grade. And and you could step down into the twenty-two Chamber Street parking lot. Certainly not ideal, but that is one of the reasons why we're extending the stair up in the front to the third floor.
Well, but you still need, the code requires two means of egress.
Correct. And there is egress out out of the building, out into the back there. And you
I understand that. The basically, the code requires the two stairs in case access to one is is limited. But I, did you discuss this with the fire department?
We haven't, I haven't had conversations with them specifically, no, because this is an existing, that happens to be an existing condition.
All right, well, I would at least think that it would be a good idea.
Yeah, no, we will definitely speak with them. It's a good idea.
Because it is, that is a, that's a more so than a planning issue. In terms of setbacks, that's a fire safety issue, and that's a concern.
We speak with them.
All we're doing is improving the the ingress.
Well, I don't, I, you're okay, I mean, we can, we can debate that. Yes, you're improving it. You're adding a second store, but sorry. But you're also putting people in a place that they can't get out. You're implying that that's an emergency access.
Right now, the stair, right now, the stair in the back is the only egress out of the third floor. Okay, there's only one way out of the third floor. So we are vastly improving it by adding a second means egress from the third floor.
All right. I mean, look, it's it's, my concern is just getting out of there. If it's acceptable to the fire department and the building department, then I'm comfortable with it. And let's see. Hard to believe that that might be it. And again, the, I guess, as I mentioned earlier, the the that setback issue on the side more so than a a planning issue in terms of justification. Is more of a fire safety issue. So, all right, that's the extent of my questions. Anyone else? All right. At this point, I think we should open it up to the public. Claudia, do you have anyone waiting? Any hands raised for this?
Yes, Mr. Zinder, can you stop sharing your screen?
So anyone out there waiting?
Nelson is coming up.
I want the cat to ask us a question.
Okay. If there is no one waiting, then we'll
Tony is, he's muted. Tony Nelson popped up, I think he's
Oh.
Brace his hand, yeah.
Yeah, I see him there. Well, he was there. Up, there you are.
Here.
Okay.
Mr. Nelson, we just need to swear you in. Do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
And could you give us your address, please?
Yes, I live at thirteen Bank Street in
Thank you.
So
Board, how are you guys?
Well.
It's interesting watching this. It's the first time I've actually watched this on Zoom, and I appreciate all the work. It's interesting watching this, this is the first time I've actually watched this on Zoom and I appreciate all the work that you guys go through to know to do that. We are part of a neighborhood group and actually there's three issues that have come up on this building. First of all, the general feeling is, you know, we really like the front design. I think that it's really pretty cool, really pretty interesting. And, but there are three major issues that we are concerned about. First of all, it's the elevation on the left side of the building. Right side of the building has been detailed in some form or another, but the left side of the building is a concrete block wall. And that concrete block wall is going to face, I don't know how many units when this graduate hotel, if it gets approved, will face. What I can't quite understand is why did they not finish that sidewall as well? I mean, you did a kind of an interesting job on the front. On the right side, it's, it's been articulated, but the left side is literally a concrete block wall. So that's one thing, and I think that should really be done if they're going to complete this building. And that building is going to be there for lots of years. It really looks terrible and more specifically, I can see it directly from my house. And it really is ugly. So that's number one. Number two, here's the matter of the parking. And this is just, you, you say it's only a half a parking space, but in reality, that building is going to be occupied by a bank. And it's going to be occupied by other uses which have to park somewhere. Now, I appreciate the planners saying, saying, yeah, there's a lot of surplus parking spaces. My problem is, and the problem with all of us on Bank Street, is that the people use Bank Street to park. And that is just a consistent problem that's not been solved. I don't think one should begin to approve these buildings unless the tenants, owners, whomever, can prove that their tenants are going to rent spaces someplace to park. Whether that's a Chamber Street lot like I do, I pay my monthly fee, I've got my fee, I've got my parking space, that's absolutely guaranteed. Most of the time, what, if a parking space is empty on Bank Street for a short while, it's immediately filled up. And Josh knows it because we've gone through this before, there's going to be a reduction in parking because of 20 Nassau Street being vacated. They're putting in 100 parking spaces, but still nonetheless, there's going to be people in that building and they're going to park someplace and the clients are going to park someplace. What we don't, what I would really like to find out is where are those people actually going to park? And how are you going to deal with this parking? Because to continue to waive parking requirements in downtown, I think is really ridiculous. And also I just think that it really puts a negative onus on us on Bank Street. I mean consistently, and the town is not dealt with. And it just, one more building, one more set of tenants, one more set of issues as they circle around the block or find a place to park. There's a third, which is really a little issue. That building in the back has an LED light which lights my kitchen at night. 15 Bank Street, 11 Bank Street, and it just, it's so bright that it lights all of the neighborhood's backyards. Now, the only thing that's saving it right now is the tree. But just as soon as that tree's leaves gone, we could walk around the house with no lights, with, with no lights on the house at all. So those are the three issues one way or the other. The facade on what we see, the parking and the light, the light could probably be easily taken care of tomorrow. But the other two are, you know, the facade, that's probably not a big issue, but it's probably done quickly. But the parking is the thing that really concerns more and more. As more of these buildings get approved, yeah, we got surplus parking where? If that's true, then make the tenants pay for it and make them park there, not on Bank Street.
So can I answer at least one or two of the questions?
Sure.
So first, starting with the light on the back. We were actually not aware that there was an issue with that light because it's on at night and we're not around, but.
It's on, it's on 24 hours a day, it never goes off.
Yeah, so there's no problem, we're going to, we'll put a shield, we'll screen that light for, from your facades, that's not a problem. And ideally it's going to only be triggered with, with access, with emergency access, so that it wouldn't be on 24/7. So that's, it's our pleasure to fix that.
That's easy.
And as far as the facade up against graduate, you know, it's, it's been existing and it was never changed. We don't know why it wasn't changed. And honestly, we haven't considered altering it yet because we didn't really know until very recently what graduate was proposing next door. So that could certainly be something that we can consider with the ownership, putting stucco on it, making it similar to the other side. Or, you know, as an architect, I might suggest putting some, some plantings, you know. But the challenge is that the plantings would be growing on the graduate property even though they would be on our building. So we'd have to work with our neighbor in that regard. But I agree with you and I think the ownership would agree with you that we'd love to improve that, that facade.
Plus Josh, it's really interesting, it makes your conforming lap thing even easier, closer to zero. So if you put on a four inches, your, your, your variance go down. So I mean, but that, that is really the most inappropriate part. As you look at the building behind you, which, and you, and you're virtual, now there is some kind of a treatment on that facade, at least there's something. On the other side, it's still concrete block, so.
Don't know why, we don't know why in 94 they didn't, they didn't do anything to it.
I know, I, 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 I realize that and we've been looking at that for a while. Now there's a question of the parking.
Right, so.
Really the big issue that the neighbors are not happy.
I can't speak for a tenant coming in, except to say that I do know that kind body who's going to be occupying the ground floor while we do the construction until we can move them up to the second floor, that they are talking to the Chambers lot to park there. You know, I can't speak for them, but I know that is the intent of where they plan on parking. I also, not to speak for David or, or the ownership, but I do know that the team is in favor of resident-only parking on Bank Street, which we think is something that the town should put in place.
Great, that would be lovely.
Yeah, that, you know, if anything could be moved on that, that you can get the folks on Bank Street off your back.
Well, I would think, I would think quite frankly that that's something, Mr. Nelson, that you should bring up with the council.
Right.
Yeah, I brought it up with the council for 40 years and it never.
Well, but there's nothing, quite frankly, there's nothing we can do about it. And I don't disagree with you because I have friends on Bank Street. And I think it's something that you and the neighbors should bring up to the council in light of this building, although this is only requiring a half a space more. And I understand your concerns, but you know, we're looking at it based on the code. But graduate, the graduate building at the corner, although not before us yet, even though they're providing, I understand, cars in the basement, it's still going to have an impact, I believe, on parking in the downtown. But I think it's something, the parking you should bring up to the council.
No, I, I, you know, yeah, we, we've done that, but the problem is Steve, that as one continues to approve these billings, I don't know if this billing ever got approval for the last parking that was in that building, did it?
I believe it did.
I, 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 I don't think so.
Well, I had to, I, we have, we can look, Derek, do you know that?
Excuse me. I don't see any approval of parking in here in the findings of fact for the use variance.
No.
Well. I mean, the town owns, I think it just died.
The building has been used for the last 25 years as a, as a financial issue.
I think one can come to a reasonable conclusion, it was implicit in the approval.
I would agree.
I, I would actually agree with that also, but, yeah. But again, I was on the board when that was approved and I don't remember what the parking situation was.
And the site plan resolution is missing, it, it may have come up in that context as well.
Okay. Okay. Okay, Mr. Tony, do you have any other comments?
I'm, I'm, I'm still concerned the fact that that, it's going to generate what, 18, 20 parking spaces? I don't know what the, what the number is, the planner can actually tell us.
16, 16 and a half, I think, so 17, Derek.
So that's 17 parking spaces, which the town is not, which ideally should also be covered by this in some form or another. Should be covered by, from another, either just getting a contract with the Chamber Street lot across the way for 17 parking spaces.
And I'm sure most of the tenants will do that. And, you know, or, or I think what Mr. Zinder said is that if you go before the town, we won't be standing in your way. But I think you have to take this up with the council.
No, no, I understand that. No, I understand that, David, but reality of it is that there's going to be 17 more parking spaces that, you know, sooner or later you guys are going to have to start paying for parking.
Mr. Nelson, this building was generating parking for over two decades.
I, I fully realize that.
So, you know, I don't think we should now be burdened of trying to find 17 parking spaces. That's, this is, all we're doing is adding 178 square feet, most of which is not even usable.
But there's no real legal proof that you guys, that they ever provided parking.
Okay, all right, we, we can debate that.
Well, I guess that would be.
I argue that was implicit. If you, if the board approved the conversion of a firehouse to office use, it off-renates parking. It had to approve a variance for parking.
You know, it was the historic thing is the same as what we did at 92 Nassau Street. 92 Nassau Street, there's no parking with the building. So, you know, and that was done in the days before the Spring Street garage also. So, you know, it, it applies to every single building in the town on that basis.
I know you want to, that's why I've been pushing you on it, but I didn't want to tell you. Janet? Okay. All right, are there any other, are there any other questions? Okay. Mr.. Yeah, go ahead.
Can I just ask, I just want to understand though about the parking. As I read it, are we saying that it just, it was not in 93 that they were not required to provide any? And so we're going with.
You could say that, yeah.
No, well, I, that's why I'm, this is my question, I just want to understand what, where, what we're starting from, what the, what the history is right now. It, it is, as I thought I understood it up until this point, after it became, after it was no longer a fire station, there was not a requirement, the requirement was waived, you know, even for them, for this building to provide parking. And now there's, because of the, what, what you're doing, it's adding a theoretical requirement of half a space. So if, so if, I, I guess the momentum would be that if those, originally if those parking spaces had been required, we would just be saying, oh, you don't have to do a half, or yes, you have to provide another whole space.
So this is, this is actually very similar to, say, the change of uses when they put Sacred in 20 Nassau Street or, or when they put the great place in 20 Nassau Street. Each of those food-based uses required, I think it was between 0.3 and 0.5 of an additional parking space that they were granted the variance for, for that little amount when, when they changed the use. And, and, you know, in some ways it's quite similar, you know, we're changing from a single tenancy to a multi-tenancy. And, you know, the square footage we're adding happens to be a lobby area, it's not going to actually have people associated with it. But, but it is that 0.5 of a parking space, it is that, that difference.
But the truth is, they're still going to be, I mean, I, I, what I, I guess this is partly a point of information. I don't know whether we are bound by the decision that was made to let the parking requirement go in 93. Are we bound by that or are we at a point where we could say, and I'm, I maybe I'm asking Derek, my colleagues, Karen, if we, if we can, if we can say, but well, maybe we should, let's meet in the middle. Maybe we should say it would be, it would be a, it would be a good thing to do for, for these, in this new venture for you to say, okay, we're going to offer, we're going to make sure that there are eight spaces. Or we're going to say now we want it to be.
I, I think that puts an undue hardship on us.
And where do you get the eight spaces from?
Right, I think it puts a really undue hardship on us. We're, we're developing this building out.
The parking lot, maybe, just a thought.
But again, we're talking about a half. The challenge is that.
I'm, I, well, let me, let's back up a minute before we get into negotiation, because I don't even know if we're in a position to do that. I'm, I'm curious to know, are we bound by what was done 23 years ago in terms of letting that requirement go?
Can I comment on that?
Please.
Yes.
So if you look at the findings, today's findings on most cases are five, 10 pages long. These findings are three pages long.
I just read them.
That it was an oversight that parking was not granted. It was a firehouse for 50 years with no parking. It's been an office building with probably similar occupancy that's there now or proposed for, for 25 years.
Yeah.
I was mentioning it as a cleanup item in the memo. There's a whole school of thought about parking, there's a, there's a whole school of thought that says it's, it's, it's in the way of businesses now. We need to promote businesses, but I think it's, it's half a space. If you look at that space, the space really is not usable for any type of business use. It's, it's a, a space to get in and out of the building. So I, I mean, that's the backstory, the history is, I thought it should be cleaned up while we have the opportunity to do it now. I mean, I think you have to be fair to this applicant and look at the, the intensity of the increase and the intensity of use and, and analyze it that way.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with you, Derek. I was not on the board in 93, as a matter of fact, thank goodness. But I would agree with you, you know, this in a sense has stood the test of time. And I don't think the, I don't think we should put the burden of this, this 1993 decision on another, on a different owner, again, 27 years later. So I would agree that it's, it is, in my opinion, a half, a half a space additional. Okay, do we have any other?
One, one could say that it leaves the burden continually on the people in the, you know, I mean, that's one way to look at it is that the burden has continued to fall on the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Eve, I think part of the issue is that even in 93, and Derek, you correct me if I'm wrong, parking was a requirement, right? So.
Parking most probably was a requirement in 93.
So, the zoning board back in 93 by approving the use and not addressing parking certainly supports now the, the argument that the applicant's making now that that was implied, that the parking was okay. Now, the reality is probably that it may have been discussed, it's just not reflected at all in the resolution. I, I wonder perhaps as, as a compromise if the applicant might be willing not to provide parking themselves, but to, to agree that they might be, make sure that their tenants make arrangement, suitable arrangements for parking not on Bank Street. And I would expect with anticipated projects on Chamber Street, I'm not sure that parking on Chamber Street would be likelihood either. So that the reality is tenants have to make, would have to make arrangements for their own parking. Not that their landlord provides it, but that they need to because their visitors, their employees have to park somewhere. So.
I don't agree with, I don't disagree with you, they have to park somewhere. It's just how do you put the burden of this oversight or intentional, intentional omission? Or in fact that they considered it and not felt it was an issue back in, in 93? How do you put the burden of this on the owner? But quite frankly, if parking becomes an issue with the tenants in the building. But quite frankly, if parking becomes an issue with the tenants in the building, then it's going to, it's going to affect the tenancy in the building, which is the owner's problem.
Well, but I, I, I suppose the other side of that is, how can you be a tenant in a downtown building and not have parking? So it's one thing if the landlord says, well, don't worry about that, because I have parking. You know, I, I have so many spaces in a garage and you can rent it from me. I don't, I don't think, and I, I would agree that trying to force the applicant now to provide parking is problematic. However, it seems that the reality is all tenants have to have some form of parking somewhere. That is a reality. So it's not necessarily a burden. It's simply saying your tenants will need to make appropriate arrangements for parking.
How do we, how do we monitor that?
Yeah.
That, that doesn't make any sense at all to me, because every, everyone who rents space in downtown Princeton has to come up with parking on their own. And even if an employee is a clerk in a, in the ice cream parlor, they have to come up with parking on their own.
That's correct. And I, 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 I think what Eve's concern is that because something was overlooked years ago through a mistake, and we don't really know. We just know that
You can't say it was a mistake. You can't say it was a mistake or that it was overlooked. It's been that way for twenty-five years. I don't think, I think this is a non-issue.
I have a question for David Newton, which is, with your experience in renting space and having tenants in a lot of different buildings in Princeton, do the landlords require some of the tenants to find parking in the parking garages and rent, you know, spaces by the month? Is that common?
Absolutely not. And, you know, but as, as a matter of fact, what we would be doing is we already have with Kindbody, and we would do the same with the bank. We would tell them to go to the Chamber Street Garage and, and, and find spaces, but we do not mandate it. Palmer Square never mandated it with their tenants. You know, it's, it's just the cases. All sorts of little accommodations are done around town. The Spring Street Garage helps certain retail tenants out in terms of monthly accounts and whatever. And you know, the situation works. I mean, and as somebody said, is that the, the people to be concerned about are not the people who work in this building, who can probably go out and afford, you know, if you work, you know, for a bank or the bank, which will have five or six employees at most, will go out and rent spaces for their employees at the Chamber Street Garage. The people who you could, should be concerned about, who probably are some of the people who park on Bank Street, are, are, are the people who work in the ice cream stores or, or the retail, or, or retail stores, where, where parking can at times be a real hardship.
And that's been a discussion in the town for a while, parking for, you know, employees of shops and restaurants and things like that. Where do they park? Because they, they go out into the community and they park on streets with unlimited access during the day, or, you know, now at least more so than before, there's parking down near the train station. I mean, it's not convenient, but if you work in downtown, it's an alternative. You pay for it. But again, that's up, I don't think it's, at this stage, I really don't think it's the owner of the building's responsibility to deal with that. And again, trying to put that burden on the, the tenants, I don't think we can really, I mean, Derek's got enough to do. We can't try to figure out if a tenant's got parking somewhere.
Did that answer your question, George?
Parking has always been, I think parking has always been a real mess. And while I applaud Josh's excellent presentation, I love the design. I think it's excellent. And I have every reason to be in support of this. I am really concerned about the parking, and I think it raises a very important issue. And the fact that it may not have been raised twenty-some odd years ago, I know parking has always been an issue in Princeton, but it's only gotten worse. And it will continue to get worse with all these accessory dwelling buildings, which isn't your responsibility. The fact of the matter is that we're going to be inundated by cars. So how is it that we're giving a business a pass when they should have seventeen spaces? So this is a real issue, and my heart goes out to the people on Bank Street, because, you know, there, there are some wonderful signs for people who haven't driven on Bank Street, where I'm recalling one that says if your car is parked here, the last person who parked their car here was found buried in a, in a ditch or something like that. And it's a comical sign, but it's, it's there for a reason, because people are abusing the parking. It is an issue. And, you know, while, while it's all well and good for us to, you know, nudge, nudge, wink, wink, elbow, elbow, a smile, smile, the fact of the matter is that it is an issue and it does need to be addressed.
And, and I think that, well, you're absolutely right. It does need to be addressed in the, really the way it should be addressed, at least for Bank Street, is by making Bank Street residence-only parking. That way it would take the burden off, off of Bank Street and off of those neighbors. And I'm curious if Jim maybe could talk a little bit about the parking study, which was done a year and a half ago or so by the town, which demonstrated, I thought, that there was excess parking in town and not a parking issue, and that it was a perception. So Jim, I don't know if you want to.
Well, there's, yeah, there's two things. I can address that. But the one thing I want to point out too is you have to remember with Kindbody in particular, they're under contract to provide services to university undergrad and graduate students. So the majority of the people that are going to that facility will likely be either walking, riding a bike, you know, they're not going to be driving in cars to get there. So I think that's going to help with the parking demand in some respect. But going through the parking study, and this was
You're, you're representing that the majority of the patients in a woman's practice are going to be university students?
Yeah, but it's my
With the university.
Right.
I was asking Mr. Collins, sorry, Mr. Lettzi. I'll, I'll hear what you say in a minute. Are you representing the majority of patients will be university students?
It's my understanding from our, our client and their discussions with Kindbody, that Kindbody has been contracted with the university to provide services to university students and undergraduate students. I don't know if they accept other patients within the facility or not, but our understanding is that the majority of the people that will be there are going to be on, on the contract that they have with the university.
Thank you.
So it's not primarily fertility issues, I would gather. I mean, now we're getting far afield, but that was earlier. It was mentioned earlier. It seems like a funny
I, I, I think that's, I, I'm fully aware of what I announced. I think that, that fertility issues, if you go into the Kindbody website, you'll find that fertility issues are a very major part of their, of their, of their business.
Yeah, so they will, they, they will accept patients from outside the university, but the, the rea, the whole reason they're here is because of the contract that they have. So. Yeah, when I looked, when I looked at the parking study, the, the bottom line is obviously there are ups and downs. There are certain areas of, of the municipality where parking is more of an issue, but they focused in particular on the publicly available parking garages, in particular Chamber Street. And really, when you look at that study, their conclusion was that there's a significant excess of parking that's regularly available at the Chamber Street Garage. And that's why I think most of the people in the area go to that facility to try to lease spaces, you know, and it's fairly easy to get. But you know, on-street parking continues to be a problem, I think in a lot of places, but it, it's really the lack of people's understanding is what the study says of where public parking is available and how to access it that kind of drives that portion of it. But the conclusion of the study was pretty clear, that there's a pretty significant excess of spaces on a regular basis at the Chamber Street Garage.
But that's not
Who commissioned this study?
I, I, I can jump in a little bit. As he represented, is accurate on what the study says. And that all the vacant spaces in various parts of the downtown area need to be incentivized by various price, pricing structures for people to use them more and take up the vacant ones. I'd say the, the Bank Street people, rather than talking to council, who won't do anything right now, should talk to Councilwoman Fraga, who is the head of the Parking Subcommittee, which I serve on. And we're trying to find some solutions to the all-street parking and people parking there. But I do know the town is not in favor of putting loads on building owners and, and businesses. Businesses do it voluntarily, as Josh said, and if they want to, or they find the need to, the business themselves will purchase for their employees, sometimes reselling it at a discount to them, parking spots. But there's no easy answer to this, except for like the Parking Cast Force coming up with resident-only on Bank Street, if we're talking Bank Street. But putting, in my opinion, putting the load on a particular property owner is not what the town supports at this time.
And, and Mr. Tenenbaum, I'll, I'll tell you, I'm looking at, and, and the municipality actually can commission this study. It was performed by a, a big engineering company. And if you look in that study at figure fifteen, it specifically talks about weekday Chamber Street and Hullfish Street garages parking utilization. And if you look routinely on an average weekday, there are between the two facilities hundreds of spaces that are available during the weekdays. So it, it, the study was pretty conclusive, and they actually went in and physically counted, I'm sorry, they got data from the Parking Authority showing in and out, and, and they did this for a pretty wide set of, of data. So the conclusions are, are drawn directly from actual data that came from the occupancy of these garages. So it, it, it's pretty significant.
Yeah, James, I, 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 I agree with the study, but the actual reality, in fact, is since I do live on Bank Street, and one of the things I wanted to do was find a parking space and get a parking space over there. Now, this is pre-COVID. Right now, the parking is definitely lots and lots of space available. But you know, it took me almost two years in a waiting line to get a parking spot at the Chamber Street Garage? Two years. Not quite, maybe it was, you know, maybe it was a little twenty months or so, but I, but I put my name in. It took me twenty months. And in fact, I went to the town and said, can you help me? Because where am I going to park? I can't park on the street because I, you know, you, after two hours you have to move. Somebody is going to take your spot. And so the logical, for all of us on Bank Street, is to go to the Chamber Street lot. But honestly, it took that period of time because I was on this waiting list. So there's, there's something not quite correct here. From practical experience to the, the test, I mean, right now it'd be a great time to do it, because the parking lot's sitting there mostly empty. Probably they're anxious to get people to rent monthly spots. But that has been my experience there. And I agree, we would love to be able to get resident-only on the street. We've been trying that. I've been here for forty years. We've been trying that. The council can't decide. I mean, they just can't make a decision about any of this stuff, it seems to me. And the NRG study was a really good study. I mean, it was really a good study, but what's happened after they spent their three hundred thousand or whatever it was? Zero. So, you know, I don't know whose fault it is, but this just adds to the complexity of the problem.
Yeah, understood.
A half a space. Interesting. Okay.
No, it's not half a space. It's
A half a space. That's
No, it's not. That's not the question.
Karen, what, what is our, what's, what's our obligation?
Well, I think, I think the problem remains that there was a prior approval for the building. It did approve the bank use, which although not considered retail, was still a bank use, and that there was no mention whatsoever of parking. So in order for that use to exist, whether you want to call it a tacit approval or a waiver or whatever, that parking approval in some fashion had to go with that use. And it's been allowed now for all these years. So the applicant is advised, you know, they feel it's unfair. They shouldn't have to have an obligation with their tenants or how they accommodate parking. So in the absence of that accommodation, it's, it's a tough argument to make that parking now, there should be a seventeen space variance. Now, having said that, since the applicant's argument is that it was approved tacitly, however, that approval had to be had to run with this use, that you couldn't have a use all these years and not have that waiver for parking. This whole argument has really come up because of the suggestion that this gray area be addressed in some fashion. But it seems to me that since the applicant's argument makes, makes sense, there's no need now to give a variance for seventeen spaces. That, that waiver, whatever you want to call it, has been going on for a long, long time, as has been pointed out by the applicant. So it's, it's difficult, I think, for the board to now say, sure, that's fine. We'll give you a variance for seventeen spaces. And I'm saying, I don't, I don't think you need to do that. What the zoning officer has pointed out to you is that since it had to have a parking waiver or approval to operate for all these years, the differential now technically is half a space. So if board members find that this is, should we say, not, not a road they want to go down, the actual variance that's been identified by the zoning officer is half a space. He suggested a variance for the whole building, because I think what he was trying to say was, let's just recognize, this is, this is how it's been functioning. And in some fashion, as Mr. Sharber points out, we don't know what happened at the prior hearing. We don't know if there was a discussion. But in order for that use to continue all those years, it was operating with some kind of an approval, even if it was just tacit approval. That's what was happening. And wasn't cited. There were no issues with it, because they had come in front of the board and parking was not an issue. And we don't know if there was a discussion about it. Just was, was not addressed. So I think your obligation tonight would be to address this half-acre space, which is the variance that's been identified by the zoning officer.
Now, for, for me, you know, I'm glad to hear that from our attorney. And there would be no need to vote on seventeen spaces. Her statement is going to be in the minutes, and we vote on a half a space.
Steve, can we go into executive session?
No. Oh, you mean, oh, to discuss? Oh, sure. I'm sorry. I was, I was thinking you were saying close. No.
Before we do that, I think if any of the board members have any other comment, or then we should allow Mr. Lettzi to make a closing statement, and then we can go into executive session. Tom, do you want to say anything?
Sure, I, I'll keep it, I'll keep it short. As I noted at the outset, I think we have a prime opportunity here to encourage two new businesses into the central business district. And, you know, I don't have to tell you, this is a very difficult economic time. And here we have an ownership willing to invest substantial dollars And here we have an ownership willing to invest substantial dollars to prepare a building for two tenants, which we hope will be a mainstay of Princeton for a long time. In terms of the satisfaction of legal criteria, I think the evidence is overwhelming, as indicated by our experts. We have met both the positive and negative criteria for the use variances to allow the bank, retail bank on the first floor, as well as the C variants for the setback, side yard setbacks, and for the parking, given it's a half a space. And there's, in our opinion, as supported by a municipal parking study, not our parking study, but the municipality's study, there is ample parking in public garages and lots. And if the Bank Street residents would like us to join them in requesting that council only allow residential parking on Bank Street, we will be willing to do that. There is no issue there. And in terms of Mr. Nelson's other comment on the lighting, we will add a shield. We'll agree to that condition. And in terms of the facade, we can take it under advisement, and it's going to depend on what happens with the Graduate Hotel. So with that, hopefully, the board will determine that we've met our burden and will grant both the minor site plan as well as the variance relief. Thank you.
Mr. Lattisi, two questions for you. Mr. Bridger had a recommendation that a condition of approval, if the application is approved, is a dedication of a five-foot strip of land?
Yes.
And that's acceptable. And also, Mr. Khan raised some concerns about fire safety review. I don't know if this application needs fire safety review, but is the applicant willing to let the fire department review it?
Yes.
To address, okay.
It should be part of the building department review. If it's specific, I'd be comfortable with it specifically being mentioned.
Okay.
All right. I guess we're at the point now, let's go into executive session.
So does that mean we leave?
No, no, they're just going to discuss now, just, I mean.
We're just done hearing, we're done hearing presentations.
I usually hear it as deliberations, okay, that's fine.
Play quietly by yourself for a few minutes.
I'll mute, all right, thank you.
Okay, board members. Anyone?
I was initially skeptical, excuse me, go ahead, Michael.
I was just, when nobody said anything, I said what I thought, that if we have the attorney's opinion, that becomes the record. And the variance is about a half a space in my mind, that's what I would suggest.
I was initially somewhat skeptical about the idea of putting another bank in town, but I agree with the presentation, and I think the retail nature of this bank would drop, more likely to draw people downtown than just having other space. So I'm kind of, I'm in favor of this proposal.
Yeah, I support it as well. I agree with the comments related to the articulation of the facade. So I am wondering how do we word such a condition?
I'm sorry, Brenice, when you say the conditions regarding the facade?
Yeah, related to the blank side facade, the kind of unarticulated blank side.
Their willingness to consider that or work with. Well, as I understand the commitment, they're willing to look at it and try to work with Graduate Hotel if their application, which is coming to the board, if it is approved.
Right.
We can make that a condition, it's not, it's pretty open-ended because it's simply a promise to try and do something.
Have a dialogue.
Yeah, but we can add that, we can certainly add that as a condition.
Well, I was initially, I actually am in favor, I don't have a problem, let's put it that way, with the bank use. When the bank across the street, the Bank of Princeton, was first proposed and voted on by this board, and I was on that case, I voted against it, just because banks were an issue downtown. It's been there for a long time. I think the nature of Chamber Street has changed a little bit. I know we really can't use the proposed hotel as a, as, again, something that's considered as part of this. But the hotel will have a significant change on Bank Street, and I think for the better, for everybody. So I have no problem with the use at all. I think that the parking, I do believe that it is only the obligation of this owner, applicant to provide .49 spaces, so I don't have a parking issue. You know my feeling about the fire safety. And I still feel, and it's not my decision, it's up to the architect. And if, you know, he is an expert in this field, and if he feels that the elevator is appropriate in the location it's in and requires the addition, second-story addition, then I'll defer to him. So overall, I'm in favor of this application. Anyone else? Okay, if nobody else wants to say anything, if somebody would like to make a motion.
I approve that, I recommend that we approve or make a motion to approve the D variance and the other variances as a C1.
And minor site plan?
And a minor site plan.
With the condition of the light shielding?
Well, so we run through the conditions, what I have down here is.
Thank you.
We have the dedication of a five-foot strip of land, we have fire safety review, we have shielding of the LED lighting. The applicant will make good faith efforts to improve the appearance of this concrete block wall, and they'll make an effort to work with the neighboring owner at 20 Nassau. And let's see what else. And if the Bank Street residents do make a request to council for resident-only parking on their street, they'll be happy to indicate support for that request. So those are the conditions I have in my notes. Does anybody have anything else?
I stuck with Michael Floyd's.
Okay.
Claudia?
Mr. Cohen? Mr. Cohen?
Yes, and I'd like to add, not as an act of the chair of the zoning board, but as a citizen of Princeton, I would, Tony, I would support you in your efforts to get resident-only parking on Bank Street.
Appreciate it, Steve, thanks.
You're welcome.
Ms. Paulson?
Yes, I was muted, sorry, yes.
Who did you say?
Michael Floyd.
I'm voting yes, and the Parking Task Force is having its first pandemic, since the pandemic, meeting tomorrow. I will bring it up at 11 o'clock tomorrow when we meet for Bank Street. So yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Valvani?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Oh, wait, Claudia, did you get Mr. Schreiber?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
What about Mr. Stein?
No, he can't vote tonight because he's second alternate, so.
Oh, sorry, okay.
Just an observer.
So what was the final vote?
Unanimously, yes.
That included at least five votes, right?
No, he actually had six, yes.
Came Mr.?
No, seven, I take that back.
Seven, seven.
Seven.
We will do you proud, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Stay safe and healthy.
Yeah, it was an excellent discussion. Thank you.
I hope you can do your other meeting, Tom.
I don't know.
Sorry about that.
Thank you for accommodating me, take care.
You're welcome. Okay. Does anybody need any time, or do we just go right on to the next hearing? Okay. So our next hearing is case number Z 2020-858-16.
One second, I'm trying to allow the attorney. One second. Hi, Ryan, do you need anybody else?
No, we have everyone, and just make sure you don't boot Jim Kyle out, he'll be our.
I'm sticking around. Okay, so we can proceed, I can continue here?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'll start again. This is case Z 2020-858-16, South Harrison Street, Block 5301, Lot 17, Qualifier 17.01, C01 in the R3 Zone, and 93 Sergeant Street, Block 5301, Lot 18, Qualifier 18.01, C01 in the R3 Zone. I guess notices, have they been, are they?
They have, they have been given, and they are in order, the board has jurisdiction.
Good. Derek, can you go through your memo?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
The subject property consists of 16 South Harrison Street and 5 Sergeant Street. It's a, two principal dwellings on one lot. The applicant and owners of 16 South Harrison are Barry and Daniel Rand and Anthony Marini Zooli, and Tamara Barnes are the owner of 5 Sergeant Street. A D2 use variance is requested, they are proposing some additions to the 16 South Harrison Street property. And the two houses on the lot is considered a non-conforming use. They also need a D4 FAR variance to permit an addition on the 16 South Harrison. Bulk variances are requested for smaller side yard setback and height to setback. Properties located in the R3 Zone in the former borough and the existing two single-family dwellings situated on a single lot is considered a pre-existing legal non-conforming use. Those uses were permitted up until probably the early 2000s, when the definition of a lot was changed, and it permitted only single families in the R zones in the former borough. The subject property is not complying with respect to the bulk requirement for the front yard setback for 16 South Harrison. The requirement is 25, the existing is 23.9. And then 5 Sergeant Street is not compliant with respect to the required 35-foot rear yard setback, the existing is five. This project envisions an addition, two-story on the northern elevation on 16 South Harrison, fronting. No work is proposed at 5 Sergeant Street. This first-floor addition will expand the kitchen. There's a second-floor addition that will expand the two existing bedrooms. And there's a small one-story addition proposed next to the garage on the northern elevation. And this area will be used as storage. These additions comply with the setbacks. The applicant is proposing a second-floor addition on the Sergeant Street facade, which encroaches into the required side yard setback and the height to setback line. So in accordance with the NJSA 4055-D-70D2, the addition to the single-family house at 16 South Harrison are considered an expansion of a non-conforming use. I've already discussed the definition of lot, which changed that use to become non-conforming in the, probably around 2006. They also need a D4 variance, which is an FAR variance, for the additions to 16 South Harrison. The FAR for the maximum for the lot is 40%, the existing is 41.25. That includes both of the principal dwellings on the site, and the proposed will be 44.88. As we've discussed before with D variances for FAR, the applicant doesn't need to show that the site can accommodate, that is particularly suited, but that the site can accommodate the problems associated with the increased floor area ratio. And there is a bulk, there are two bulk variances, and they pertain to the addition on Sergeant Street. It basically is built on top of the existing structure there, and the required side yard setback is eight feet, the proposed is 4.1. It also violates the required three-to-one height to setback ratio, the proposed is 5.24 to one. That's a quick synopsis of the memo, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, Derek? Okay, Brian, please start.
Thank you, members of board, try to be brief tonight if we can. My name's Ryan Kennedy from the law firms of Stevens and Lee. For the applicant's, Barry and Danielle Rand for their home on South Harrison Street here tonight. They're seeking relief to restore and expand their home located on the corner of South Harrison and Sergeant Streets. We hope that you'll find that this is a plan that is compatible with the character of the neighborhood and the realities of squeezing a growing family into a historic, more than 100-year-old home on a lot with existing non-conforming uses, or excuse me, non-conforming characteristics. Working with Architect Ron Berlin, you'll hear from him tonight. The Rand family will be matching, replacing a lot of the historic elements of the circa 1920 home with modest additions that total about 300 square feet in new floor area, both, as Derek said, above an existing sunroom, and then a two-story addition to allow them to expand their kitchen and modernize it, so it could be an eat-in kitchen, and then to reconfigure the bedrooms on the second floor. Yes, there are a pre-existing floor area with this property, but as you'll see, it is a pre-existing two, well, technically not two-family, two individual dwelling units with a historic use of a main house and a carriage house that had been converted into another dwelling unit. I'll note that the most affected neighbor, you know, essentially joined into the application, literally, you know, by signing it to allow this to go forward. So, and some outreach, the neighbors have also concluded that we hope that you'll find there's not detriment here to the neighborhood by allowing this modest addition to move forward, that will really just bring the house to approximately 2,500 square feet. Again, a fairly modest home for the area. Tonight, you'll hear from three groups of people. First, the applicant to talk about their needs and why they're choosing to do this to the home rather than, you know, trying to create something more conforming on the lot. You'll hear from Ron Berlin, the architect, to go through what is actually planned. And then finally, you know, it's been about 20 minutes since you've heard from Jim Kyle, but we have a planner to go through the D variance and C variance testimony. I think, we hope that you'll find that this is appropriate under the standards. And again, I'll point out that this is an anomaly of, we think, two single-family uses on one lot rather than a two-family. There is a different floor area ratio available to a two-family. Technically, this is not a two-family because they're not connected. It would potentially comply on floor area if they were connected rather than. It would potentially comply on floor area if they were connected rather than the main house and carriage house configuration that's historically been there. So with that, I'd like to introduce and ask that Barry and Danielle be sworn in to introduce themselves and talk about why, you know, their, their needs for the, for the home.
Mr. and Mrs. Rand, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And so Barry, if you could just quickly introduce yourselves and then, you know, talk about your, your time here in Princeton and your needs for, for expanding slightly your home with your growing family.
Sure. Thanks, Ryan, and thanks, everyone, for your time this evening. So my wife and I, Danielle and I, moved here just over seven years ago, June 2013. I took a position at the university. And we, we moved here actually from Europe with a, with a son who is not even six months old at that time. And he's now seven years old. We've since had two more children, two daughters, one five, one three. And we like this home. It's very convenient to my commute to the university, which I do by bike. Probably I've passed many of you by car or on foot or by bike at some point because I also drive my, ride my kids around to the various daycares and camps every day. And the, you know, we, we like the location. It's not directly in town, but it's very close to town. We can easily walk there, bike there, et cetera. And we like the sort of neighborhood we have here with the neighbors. Kids get along with, with everyone and, and we'd like to stay here. We like the historic character of this home. Michael Graves used to live here, in fact, for, for some time before building his fight of people, right? And we, we like to enhance the kitchen, which we're sitting in right now, which also these days serves as, as office. So we'd like to also make that sort of capacity better. And, you know, the realities of having five people in a currently 2,000 square foot home, just, you know, it's, it's, it's sometimes can be strained.
Thanks, Barry. Before we start and I'll just for the board's benefit and, and your board's attorney, we had previously provided one pre-marked set of exhibits. Well, I guess I'll ask them to be marked as A1 as we start. It's a PowerPoint presentation of, I think, 14 slides. The last one says, thank you. It really isn't as long as it sounds. Now, Barry, one last thing before we, or as I'm opening up the, the screen share. You know, obviously, you heard the board's attorney say that we, you know, we were properly noticed here, but in addition to the formal notice that we were required to do, I believe we, you had reached out, you know, kind of informally to all the neighbors, you know, in the form of a better explanation and, and, you know, without telling, without having you explain what anyone told you, you know, had, did anyone raise any concerns when you, when you spoke to them about the project?
Nothing, no, nothing, nothing negative came up about the project at all.
So I'm gonna take us through a few of the slides, Barry, and just kind of ask you a few questions to orient the board here. This is slide two. It's the zoning map. Does that arrow point to the, your house?
It does, yes.
All right, and maybe you could orient the board in terms of the, the streets here as well as the relationship to Nassau Street and the kind of much bigger business district that you, you border.
That's right. So, so we are located at the corner of South Harrison Street and Sergeant Street, one block south of Nassau Street where there are multiple businesses, probably Whole Earth Center is about the best well-known one. I think that's probably 221 there. And we live across the street, across South Harrison Street from a park.
North Harrison Street Park.
Sorry, Harrison Street. Harrison Street Park, which is 52.01 there.
Now. So this map shows lots 17 and 18. They, there's a different map showed them a different way, but where I'm showing is 18. Is that actually your yard there?
That is actually our side yard. Yes, that's correct.
And then, so this lot here in the, the NB zone on Nassau Street actually touches your art essentially?
It touches the part of the overall two-unit lot, but technically that corner is the, is part of the yard of our
Carriage House. Turn off the laser pointer. Makes it harder for me to switch slides. Slide three here, this is a overhead photo. Again, is the, the red part shows your property?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Again, here's slide four. This is a Google overhead. And you just described again, your property is compared to the, the carriage house.
Yeah, so our property is there in the, in the four, the one that the blue arrow is pointing toward. The carriage house is mostly shaded, but you can see part of it there behind and to the left of our house, which has that L shape to it.
And then you were talking about the park that's across the street here, directly in front of your home?
Correct.
So this is pretty self-explanatory, but I guess this is a, this is a view of your home from the, the corner of the street?
That is right, from the corner of South Harrison and Sergeant.
And just so everyone has a clear, this fence here, that's actually fences off your yard. That's not a neighbor?
That's right. That fences off our yard and our patio.
And, you know, we'll get into this a little later, but there's some lovely trees here. Do you have any intention of removing these trees when you do the additions?
No, not at all.
Want to just describe the, the interplay between your house and the, and the carriage house here?
Sure. So we share a driveway with the carriage house. There's sort of like a common part of it there at the, at the bottom, and we have a one-car garage and space for one car where you can see a car park there behind the garage. And the carriage house has what you probably would guess to be about three cars parking. So we essentially have the ability to park two cars and the carriage house about the ability to park three if needed.
Got it.
But we do indeed share a driveway.
This next view, this is the view of the home from Harrison Street?
Correct.
And I know, I don't want to steal Ron's, the architect's thunder, but behind this tree to the, this holly tree to the right of the house, that's the sunroom that you're going to be building over?
That's right.
And then the other small addition would be to the, the left side, kind of on the other side of this fence, is that?
Correct.
And then another view, this is the front of the house?
Yes, from, from the yard itself, the front yard itself.
Excellent. And I think I asked before, but again, no intention of removing these, these trees that, that you've got here?
No, neither the holly tree nor what you, you can barely see, but it's an Asian plum tree there at the left side, on the other side of the fence. No intention to remove either of those.
Excellent. I'm gonna ask you not to go too far, but I'll introduce Ron Berlin at this point, our architect, to go through the next couple of slides.
Mr. Berlin will just swear you in. Do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
We have you, Ron?
Muted, Ron.
Mr. Berlin, we just need to swear you in. Do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Ron, you gotta hit the unmute button.
So sorry. I do.
Thank you.
And I, I don't have a thunderous presentation to make in spite of what Brian said. Thank you, Mr. Bridger and Mr. Cohen, and thank you, board, for hearing this application.
Actually, Ron, before you start, let me just ask very quickly, you know, your Princeton-based architect, just go through your credentials and I'll have the board, if it's acceptable, accept you as an expert here tonight.
He's, excuse me, he's testified for us before and I have no problem accepting him.
Wonderful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, this is, this is, it's really a lovely house and it's a really nice scene. But this family is strained, living in this house right now. And I wanted to, to help them stay here because that's their intention. And also, I wanted to be careful not to do violence to the house because it's modest, but charming. And, and so I formulated these two additions that are subordinate to the main body of the house. So instead of just extruding this house out in either direction, I wanted to keep this central mass as the sort of rather modest and cottage-like thing that it is. And, and assure that each of these appendages would be just that, that they would be lower than and recessed from this, the main body of the house. Now, the fact that it's, it's a cottage, it's not a, you know, a grand palace, made it even harder in a sense to telescope downward. But, but I'm quite comfortable with the, the spaces that will be provided. And, and you can see that these upper floor windows that, that the front wall of the house is not a full-height wall. That is, in those rooms, there's actually sloped ceiling. And the head of those windows, it is at about five and a half feet off the finished floor. And I didn't violate that. Like in the addition, even though it would be nicer to have taller window heads and bring light in from a higher level. No, I did lower the sill height in the southern addition. So it would be a sunnier sunroom on the second floor than it otherwise would have been. But, so, you know, those are some of the the moves that I made here. I, in it, they're both gable additions. And again, they mimic the cornice configuration of the existing house, but lower in both cases. You know, this, this house is not in the Jugtown Historic District, properly speaking, but it's in Jugtown. Like, let's face it. And, and so I approached it kind of with that spirit of, of Jugtown, really almost as if I had been constrained by the, you know, historic review board requirements, even though they do not apply to the, to this site. And as Ryan pointed out, if the two buildings, you know, we're, you know, it's a weird property in a way because there are two houses on it and that was a pre-existing condition. If, if we had striven to attach them so that we could kind of grab that loophole, as it were, well, I, you know, I, I wouldn't have been happy with that solution. And I'd venture to say that you wouldn't have been either because from Sergeant Street, then we would have had this broad opaque elevation. And as it is now, we have this, you know, breathing space between the two buildings that I think needs to stay. And I'm hoping that, that you'll agree with me on that. Let's see, anything else to, I know that just as a point that might be of some interest to you, that the owner is at least as interested as I am in energy efficiency. So part of the additional construction and reconstruction of the existing house, part of that effort in building will also be to greatly enhance the insulation. In fact, he teaches a course in this at Princeton University. So I guess we're, we're gonna make this a kind of a quiet showcase for those principals. I might also say one other thing, and it doesn't really show, hmm, Ryan, maybe the general, that first plan, it's at very small scale, but the house directly across Sergeant Street has, in fact, a two-story addition. I don't know if, yeah, nah, go back one more. Well, yeah, you can see it, you can see it in that photo. And you can see it too there. And so there, these two additions on Sergeant Street would be kind of sort of talking to one another. They're, you know, they're of, of, of a similar technology. That south-facing addition on, on the ground floor is a sunroom and and I'm essentially making it a two-story sunroom. It's a pretty, I'm gonna say it's a dumb architectural move. And it's a modest one. I mean, this is an anti-grandiose strategy that I've proceeded with in, in these proposed improvements. So, Ryan, anything else that you wanted to draw out of me?
No, I, I think from the, from the, you know, your, your strategy or how you've approached this, I think we, we've got it and I appreciate you talking about the environmentally sensitive and, and green elements that the homeowner, even if you didn't ask, would, would make you do, just because of the type of applicant that they are. I, I've switched now to slide nine. So this is the, the site plan, if you will, and maybe we could talk about where these little additions are going to be placed on the site.
And that's exactly what I wanted to mention. The south addition, which faces Sergeant Street, again, it's simply right directly on top of the existing sunroom. The north addition is set back by almost the same amount from the front facade. It extends only, I think, about five and a half feet. That's, it's a narrow sliver, but it's going to be completely open up to the, what is existing dining room and kitchen. And the little carbuncle connector there is useful storage from, accessible from the garage side, but a part of it is actually part of the extension of the kitchen. And this all, without getting into the nitty-gritty of the floor plan, it was a way of completing the space of the kitchen without bloating that north addition. So it, you know, this allows me to create that symmetrical, telescoped, gable-ended piece without violating the existing north facade. I guess you understand that better when you look at that north facade, but we don't need to turn to it now. Well, as you wish. The important thing, though, on the north is that there's an existing terrace there. It's impervious coverage and we're pretty much keeping, we're just, we're not, we're hardly creating any additional new impervious coverage because we're going over what is now terrace.
Ron, and that's the, in this slide here, we're looking at, this is the, the left is the existing condition, the right is the proposed. You can see that, that left addition over the terrace that you described and then the right addition over the existing sunroom.
Right. Thank you.
I think we're looking at the north elevations here, current, existing to the left and the proposed to the right. You want to maybe describe the, and they seem quite minor from, from this elevation, but the, the changes, we're looking at the, the bump out staring at us right now, right?
All right, let me just, let me see if I can move this. Yes. Right, here's where you can see that, that the proposed addition on the north is a kind of a, a slight minute, miniaturization, as it were, a, a, a sort of a throttling down of the main body of the house. And in order to still expand the kitchen in that left-hand corner of the kitchen, I inserted this kind of one-story linking element. So it means that once we're above that level, then you can see the forms intersecting in this harmonious fashion that we're attempting to create here. But it's, it's really pretty modest. It's still a pair of French doors that face onto a, a reduced terrace and a pair of windows in the kitchen letting a lot more light into a much more spacious kitchen. It's pretty much an open family room kitchen sort of space that this family desperately needs. Pretty much an open family room kitchen sort of space that this family desperately needs.
This next slide is the Sergeant Street elevation?
Right. And here you can see a similar strategy being pursued. And, you know, this like very, very straightforward kind of vertical extrusion of the sunroom, but scaling it down somewhat on the second floor. So there's a sense of hierarchy. The main floor has taller windows, and the second floor has more modestly sized windows.
And here, we've got a side-by-side of the existing conditions.
Right.
Floor plan?
And you can see that it's a tight kitchen. And, you know, they've got a table in that dining area adjacent to the kitchen, which is on the north end here, obviously. And it's just, there's a lot going on in that one space. That is the biggest driver, I think, of the improvements that we're proposing here. And there you can see, it's a little bit, there's a beam there in the kitchen with a single column support. So just make that disappear in your mind. It's a dashed line that comes across as being a little heavier. Then it won't be seen at all. But you can see how much relief that gives to their family living area. And on the second floor, the children's bedrooms are expanded. There's a guest bedroom now for grandparents and other visitors. And there's a very much needed study, which is the sunroom addition on the second floor, just off the master bedroom. And even if COVID doesn't continue, I think this is going to be a very valuable asset to the, he really needs a home office. Pretty straightforward, in a way.
Thank you, Ron. Before we switch over to our planner, turn it going, if anyone would like to ask any questions of the architect, maybe perhaps would be good time.
Anybody on the board like to ask anything?
Ryan, take it back to the elevation. It's more appropriate for zoning considerations. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, well, first of all, I do think that was a thunderous, if not low-volume, presentation. I think it was very well done.
Thanks, Ron.
Please proceed.
Thank you. I'll ask our planner, Mr. Jim Kyle, to unmute himself and virtually step forward. I know it's been a few minutes since you've heard from him. Tonight, we do require several variances. This is, as you heard, a pre-existing two-single-family lot situation. So any change to that is a D2 variance. We do have the modest 300-square-foot change of floor area that triggers the D4 variance. And I think this slide here shows perhaps quite well, might be a good one to segue into Jim's testimony. In the after condition here on the right, you can see, and I'll perhaps just kind of laser here. This spot is the existing encroachment into the side yard setback. By building on top of that, we also need a C variance for the setback as well as we clip this plane with the height-to-setback ratio. So it's the Sergeant Street side. That is the side where our bulk variances are. So with that, I'll turn it over to our planner to go through the criteria and thankfully not have to go through his credentials, since I believe he's still sworn and already approved as an expert in planning, if that's all right with the board.
Not so sure about that.
A lot has changed in the last half hour.
Karen, do you want to swear me in again, just for this?
Sure, we can do that. Do you swear? Do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful, Mr. Kyle?
I do.
Thank you.
And for the record, James Kyle with Kyle McManus Associates, 2 East Broad Street in Hopewell, New Jersey. I was retained by the applicant to review the planning issues with this application, reviewed all the plans, Mr. Bridger's report, also the architectural plans, site plan that was presented, and also been out to the site to view the conditions as well as the surrounding neighborhood. So as we talked about, we do require a D2 variance for this. This is a legally existing non-conforming use. We have a D4 floor ratio variance. We're increasing the floor area. Right now, it's slightly over the 40% that's permitted, and we're proposing to take it to 44.88. And then there are two bulk variances, one related to the side yard setback. Eight feet is required. 4.1 is existing and proposed. And then the height-to-setback ratio, three-to-one ratio is what's required. And we have 5.24 to one, and that's on the Sergeant Street side. As Mr. Bridger indicated, this is in the R3 district. This district does permit both one-family and two-family dwellings. And as Mr. Kennedy indicated, the floor ratio standard for a two-family dwelling is 45%. So if we were able to exploit some kind of loophole, we would actually comply. And the borough code definition of a two-family is that they are attached together and either side-by-side or bottom to top. So we don't have that condition here. So unfortunately, we can't make use of that. And while this is two separate lots, these two single-family homes actually sit perpendicular to those lot lines and actually cross both lots 17 and 18 together. So it's a bit of a unique situation, not something that we see very often, but I do believe it does exist maybe in some other places. So to talk first about the D2 variance for the expansion of the existing non-conforming use, we're required to demonstrate both the positive and the negative criteria here. So on the positive, I think there is a purpose of zoning that is promoted here, and that's purpose A, to promote the general health, safety, and public health, safety, and general welfare. As we've discussed, this really provides the ability for what we're deeming a relatively modest expansion, really to accommodate modern living in this historic house. So as we talked about, the house is about 2,000 square feet. You know, certainly not anything over the top, the addition. This will take it to approximately 2,500 square feet. And with a family of five, as Barry and his wife have described, it's a little tight for them. They don't really have guest space right now either. So really, this just allows for them to continue in this house and stay in the neighborhood that they like. And I think there's a public benefit here. And, you know, we've talked about this many times on other applications. It's really just, you know, these smaller lots in the former borough, particularly this one with a second dwelling, which contributes to the floor area, just kind of creates a little bit of a practical difficulty in that regard. In terms of the negative criteria, on D2 variances, the court has suggested that the board look a little bit more liberally on the negative criteria. This is a little different than proposing a totally new, non-permitted use in the zone. Essentially, the impact of that non-conforming use already exists. And we really need to look at it in the context of the actual expansion that's proposed and the impact that it has. So in terms of any impact to surrounding properties, again, I would term this a modest expansion. And it's really occurring in a manner where the portion of the addition that's visible from Sergeant Street, that's really creating the variances, is over an existing sunroom. So that setback condition already exists. We don't expect that there's going to be any substantial impact from the expansion. As our architect has discussed, this is a very similar condition to what you have across the street. It's actually almost identical, if you look at the footprints, in terms of the setback from Sergeant Street, as well as the configuration with a second story above. So it's almost an identical configuration. I don't think that the expansion's going to have any substantial impact on surrounding properties, largely based on where we're putting it on the north side, that's largely not going to be visible. And then the fact that we're respecting the existing footprint of the house on that south side and not bringing that structure any closer to Sergeant Street. In terms of the intent and purpose of the zone plan and any impact to that, I don't think there should be any substantial impact to the intent of the R3 zone. Again, two-family uses are permitted here. It's definitely a novel situation. The site really kind of gives the appearance of this being two separate dwellings and lots. And the increase in the area of 16 South Harrison Street doesn't really cause any undue harm to any of the neighboring properties, and it will largely maintain the appearance and the flavor that exists here on the property today. So I think overall, the, again, the relatively modest expansion is not going to really have any impact on either the surrounding properties or the zone plan, based on the context of it and what exists out there today. As far as the FAR variances, you heard Mr. Bridger state, we're really looking at what the impact of that increase in floor area has, first of all, on the continued suitability of the site for more intensive development. And really, the question is, can the site accommodate the problems associated with the increase in the floor area on the positive? And then on the negative, what effect does that increase in floor area have on surrounding properties? And how can we reconcile the imposition of that floor area requirement in the first place? So I think here, again, the positive criteria for this one are essentially the same. It just allows for a slight increase in the floor area to accommodate modern living. That's not an extravagant floor plan. All the bedrooms are modest, and living space is very modest as well. So I think there is some positive benefit there. In terms of the negative criteria, excuse me, one second. The increase in floor, any impact on surrounding properties? The dwelling remains modest, it's consistent with those in the areas. As we talked about, the house across the street immediately to the south has a very similar condition. It almost creates kind of a gateway of identical configuration on either side of Sergeant Street. I don't think the dwelling will be out of scale with any of the surrounding dwellings. It's very sympathetic to a lot of the homes that are on Sergeant Street, which are a little smaller, but as you go down South Harrison, it's very similar to what you see going down South Harrison Street. So I think the increase is something that's not going to have a substantial impact on the surrounding properties. As far as reconciling, you know, the obvious intent of the floor ratio is to control the mass and coverage of the lot. It better regulates the appearance of structures in relation to available land. You know, there's a lot of discussion in the master plan and all the planning documents, and a concern over the demolition of smaller structures and replacement with larger ones, which, you know, was felt to have, potentially have a detrimental effect on neighborhood character. I think here, we're really preserving the integrity of the existing structure, not demolishing it, kind of respecting the historic nature of the site and the configuration. I think when we review the surrounding dwellings, the resulting structure won't be out of character or scale with the appearance of those structures or those in the neighborhood. And I think the way, the best way that we can reconcile the FAR variance here is, first of all, based on the modest nature of the structure. I think you have to also acknowledge the unique situation of having two single-family lots on here, excuse me, dwellings on here, which contribute to the floor area. So, again, if we were looking at this as a two-family configuration, we would be just under that 45% FAR that's permitted for those. So technically, while it's not a two-family dwelling, I think it's a good way to acknowledge this unique situation and look at the fact that we do have two distinct dwellings here. And we're really respecting that 45% that might be otherwise permitted if this was a two-family dwelling. So I think that's the best way to reconcile it. In terms of the bulk variances for the setbacks, I think this meets the C2 criteria in that purposes of zoning are promoted, particularly purpose I, to promote a desirable visual environment. We're providing the addition over existing floor area. We're respecting that existing footprint. It provides consistency with that same feature that we have on the other side of Sergeant Street, which is basically identical. So I think there's some visual benefit to putting it in that location and then, of course, building it over the existing sunroom. Again, we're not moving the dwelling any closer to Sergeant Street. And really, the implication of the height-to-setback ratio is just that second-story portion of the structure. So in terms of any impact to surrounding properties, again, as I said, we're not moving the structure any closer. The large holly that we saw in some of the pictures will obscure the view of the second-floor addition from South Harrison Street. It really provides a consistent look with the house that's immediately across the street to the south. And I don't suspect that, since we're respecting the existing setback, that this will have any substantial impact on any of the surrounding properties. In terms of the intent and purpose of the zone plan, while, again, there's no specific reference to setback standards or the rationale for specific setbacks, they're generally geared to address light, air, and open space between neighboring properties. I think, as we talked about, the additions over the existing first-floor area, so the structure doesn't get any closer. The setback-to-height ratio, in my opinion, is something that's, it's important in all cases, but it's even more important in a side yard situation, which we don't have here, particularly given the potential proximity of adjacent structures. But here, we have a structure that's separated from others by a public street. So there's really not as many considerations or concerns with potential light, air, and open space. I think particularly since we're not moving the structure any closer to Sergeant Street. So I think we can meet the negative criteria there as well, and there won't be any substantial impact to the surrounding properties or the intent of the height-to-setback and the setback standards.
Thanks, Jim.
Sure.
If anyone from the board has any questions for our planner? Happy to take them.
It's worth noting that, I don't know if we made an explicit note about this, that the neighbors across the street are green things. That is, the only property across the street is the park.
Yep. So that is a, thank you, Ron, that is a good point. So on one side, we have a park. On the other side, you have a street. And then on the third side, there is a, you know, that built-in neighbor who literally had to sign this application with this applicant to allow them to bring it. So there's, it's because of the arrangement with that second dwelling unit, it's almost impossible for one owner to do something to the detriment of the other, because to bring this application, that second owner actually had to sign it and allow it to come forward. So on each side, really, it's surrounded either by areas that couldn't be impacted or ones who, if they were impacted, literally consented to it. Thanks, Ron.
Okay. Does anybody on the board have any questions of any of the witnesses?
I have a quick question about, it has nothing to do with zoning, but are you going to change the facade? I see that much of it is warped or looks like it's wet behind it. Are you going to be replacing that, painting it?
You're referring to the irregularities in the stucco?
Yes.
We are discussing that. We may repair the stucco. There's a possibility that we re-sign the structure, if that's the only feasible way of providing the level of insulation that we want to achieve for this house.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. You're welcome.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay, I'll open it up to public comment. Is there anybody, Claudia, in the, in our waiting room wishing to speak?
See anybody?
You don't see anybody, okay. All right, I'm seeing no one. We'll close the public portion of the hearing. Ryan, before we go into executive session, do you want to say anything?
I'll just, I don't want to risk pushing this too much, too much longer for the evening. Just want to thank everyone for hearing it. This is a long evening. And I think the testimony from the experts showed why this modest addition to the home is appropriate and meets the standard. So thank you again for hearing us tonight.
You're welcome. Okay, let's go into executive session. Do any of the board members have any comments? Anyone? Okay, well, I think it's a very well-done addition. I especially like, quite frankly, the Sergeant Street elevation of the corner house. I think that's really nicely done. I think the northern addition is going to actually improve that facade. I think it's very nicely done, and it'll make the house a lot more usable, especially the kitchen. So.
I agree.
Okay.
I move that we accept this proposal.
My second.
Okay, any comments on that? There any conditions to this? Okay, any, any comments on that? There any conditions to this? No? Okay, Claudia, please.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Boy? I think you're muted.
Yes.
Boy, thank you. Driver?
Yes.
Can that bomb?
Yes.
Deva Vanis?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Stephen, did you vote?
I think I did, yes.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Go forth and build. A great evening.
Thank you.
Looking forward to it.
Okay, just as a point, Karen, it, I think we're not required to start any new applications after ten thirty. I just, I, I'm not saying we should stop. I just think that isn't that part of the state regulation on zoning boards?
Well, I'm not sure that it's a state regulation, but I know that it's been the practice of this board not to begin new applications past ten thirty.
Okay, well, I, I don't have any problem continuing on. I just, if anybody on the board has any issues, let me know.
That's a question when the court reporter has to sign off.
Yeah, well, that's true. There is an increase in fee, which we would be passing on to the applicant. So once they
Under, certainly understood. I suspect that that increases in fee will be reasonable compared to the, a second here, a second meeting. But understood and certainly understand the board's time either way, so.
Okay. So let's go forward.
I would be, if I could just ask the chair's permission to take myself off of video temporarily. I haven't eaten since breakfast and I'm going to be hangry very soon. If it's all right, I'll just take myself off the video and we'll continue to participate and listen. But this way, no one will have to watch me eat.
No problem. I could use a snack, though. Okay. Our next case is Z twenty twenty eight sixty eight eighty six Moore Street, block twenty five point oh six, lot fifty four in the R three zone.
Noticing is, noticing is in order. The board has jurisdiction.
Good. Eric?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
You're welcome.
The applicants are Stuart Ratney and Rebecca Maynard, the owners of eighty six Moore Street. The house was constructed about a year ago. And at that time, the property, which is located in the R three zone, it was a detached garage, which basically had a five foot setback from the side and the rear yard. I think the intent was always to have it attached to the house, and that's what they're doing now. So when the garage becomes attached to the house, it triggers some other variances. I'll just go quickly. The lots in the R three zone and the subject lot, the width is sixty feet and the existing is fifty. So it's, it's not compliant. Currently, the garage is five feet from the side yard and sixteen and a half feet from the rear yard. When it becomes attached to the main house, it becomes part of the main house and is subject to the main building setbacks, which in this case, the side yard setback is still five for this type of garage on lots of less than fifty feet or less, but the rear yard setback is thirty five. So that's really why we're here today. I mean, the garage is there now. There's a slight connection of five or so feet to connect it to the main house, which triggers these other variances. And that's my, my memo. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address.
I don't have any questions on the application. Okay, let's begin.
Thank you so much. And again, thank you so much for, for sticking out with us here tonight. I'll hope to reward you with, with brevity. The, as Derek said, this is an existing, we'll call it a carport. In the neighborhood character, zoning changes recently. There's been a lot of effort to get garages to the rear homes, to get them and to provide relief from side yard setbacks. And for detached structures, this hits all those notes. However, it, to hit that, you really, and and considering the unique configuration of the back of this property with, as you'll see, an alleyway and an easement for some of the neighbors to turn around, there's really only one place to put it. And it was in in the back. And to connect it to the home does make it part of the home. Side yard yet setback still remains and it is is totally completely compliant. But when it becomes part of the home, as Derek said, a different setback applies. It, it's one of the things that perhaps, if you look through all of the Monopoly houses in the neighborhood character, you see the side yard setback and the floor area bonus all kind of captured this arrangement, except for this setback piece wasn't captured in that, in that change. So we've got one witness tonight. I'll ask our homeowner to unmute themselves and turn on their video. And Stuart, good to see you there virtually. And I'll ask the board attorney to swear them in if if you would.
Um, Stuart, do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Stuart, I'll just ask you to, you know, make your initial remarks. And then I'll, after you're done with that, I'll share my screen and we'll go through a few slides so this board can see what we're talking about.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cohen and the board for indulging us so late. My wife and I have lived in Princeton for about thirty five years. And now that our kids are grown, we've been looking to move basically more to the center of town to enjoy the downtown area. And we had the good fortune of finding a gem of an undeveloped lot right in town at the, near the corner of Moore Street and Wigan Street. Our goal with that lot was to build a modern house, but still one that would fit in the character of the neighborhood. And I think we've accomplished that. I should say at the start, though, and the reason for this application is that a few empty lots that exist in downtown Princeton that remain, remain with challenges. And ours came with complex setback and easement complications. The prevailing front setback is thirty five feet, which pushed the house ten feet further back than the statutory twenty five feet. And we still, of course, had the thirty five foot rear setback requirement. But more important, as we'll illustrate in a few minutes, there are easements that run across the back of the lot. And these easements are fifteen feet into the lot on each corner of the back and never less than eleven feet across the full back. So that part is unusable. And more to the point, those easements are essentially driveways for our neighbors so that they are covered with an impervious surface. So we embrace the challenge of building the house and meeting all the requirements, except that we couldn't build a proper garage. Within the impervious coverage and setback requirements, the best we could do was build a carport, which fit between an easement and the five foot line back from the house. After a trial of that carport, and we've been in the house about a year, we realized we do need a proper garage for safety and convenience reasons. First, the carport houses our electric vehicle and charging apparatus. We have other electrical equipment and normal guard implements. And these things are visible. In fact, they're visible from Moore Street. People can look down and see into that garage carport space. Also, the carport blocks the line of sight from our neighbors to our back door. And that makes us feel somewhat vulnerable because people have been going down the alley and opening car doors and rummaging around to the extent that it's involved some police action. So we feel some safety issues. And then even with the extended carport overhang to the rear door of the house, water still accumulates when it rains in that area. And we're concerned that as old souls, when that freezes, we could be in danger of slipping and falling and our convenience, that's not something worth part of it. So these concerns, we're requesting a variance to fill in the five foot gaps and the one foot roof to attach essentially the carport to the house. This will require no change in the size of the footprint or permeable coverage because the car pad already extends to the house. Nor does it otherwise entail any changes to the, to what's already been approved and constructed for the carport. It's merely adding on those, the five foot and the one foot overhead. So let me turn it back to Ryan and we can illustrate some of the points I've made.
Thank you. And I'll, just for the record, ask that we mark our pre-provided exhibits as A one. We've got a couple of slides here to, to go through. Thank you, Stuart. Just again to the board, Stuart, can you, you know, that blue arrow points to, to your, your home on Moore Street? And perhaps you could just kind of orient the board with some of the other surrounding streets and landmarks.
Right, so we can see Wigan south of us and changes where it changes to Hamilton under the arrow. And our house was the kind of a hidden lot that had been part of a larger property group that was sold off about two years ago.
This next slide overhead aerial photos at Blue Box, the, the home?
Yep, and it shows the somewhat narrower frontage, but then it widens out from that, yep.
Next slide is the tax map. So maybe you can help the board just understand the, the alley situations there and the easement and, and how you actually get to your garage.
Right, so so this one's important for the case. There are many of these in this area of Princeton on the map, but this may be the only one I know of that's actually in use. From actually Hawthorne Street to the north, which is just off the map, an alley runs, a ten foot alley runs down to this circular turnaround that you see. This alley is a right of way that services the houses on both Jefferson and Moore. And virtually all those houses have either garage or just parking stalls. And they either come down from Hawthorne or go into the public alleys from Moore or Jefferson. But that's the common parking, and I'm told the turnaround, which is thirty foot in diameter, was to accommodate fire trucks. Not sure if that was true. This is the way it's shown on the tax map. It'll be, as we go to the next slide, be a slight adjustment to the turnaround. So the next, this side is just flipped now, the north, south angles. And the turnaround, and this is a, a map from surveyors, shows actually more of this turnaround on our property than the tax map showed. So we have, where's the previous map showed the five, the ten foot driveways, five foot taken from each property. This shows that a full fifteen feet comes into our property. In addition to that, prior to my purchasing the land, a, another easement was attached to the turnaround. So this, with a wedge above the turnaround is something that's new, and this provides driveway access to another house. And that was something that was incorporated in the deed previously. So what had been shown on the tax map as coming down from the north and going to a turnaround actually continues now and widens out to fifteen feet, or hits the end of my property line.
And so now that, since we're looking at this, this is the existing configuration of, of your home. And, and this
It is.
Here is what we call the carport, the opened area that we'd like to enclose and attach to the home.
It is, and it shows how we've just nestled this in between the easement and the five foot line from the house.
I'm gonna advance to the next slide and show that it's not drastically different, but the, here's the proposal, right? So this is the only difference here, the infill of this area with the red lines and the addition of this door here to that area?
Yes.
So here's the side elevation that shows the open side of the carport. Is that right?
Yes, from, from the north side. That's right. And they would close any such.
Here it is, I think, from the other side.
South elevation. This is the main side of the house and next slide shows it become window and doors, door. And this is what it looks like currently. And sketch of what we propose.
Thank you. I, you know, if anyone has any questions for, for the homeowner, otherwise, to open up to the public and maybe just do a quick summary of, of, of these changes.
Any of the board, any board members have any questions?
I assume you're limited to one car. There's no way you can put a second car behind the garage.
That's correct.
You did answer the question for me when I was looking at your property this afternoon. And I you got back to the garage. I couldn't find any way to get there. I didn't go to Wigan. I mean, I went to Wigan, but I didn't go anyhow. Thank you.
Anyone else? I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable with this, but it, it sure looks like to me that this should have been when you, when the house was first built, that this was going to be a garage. And, you know, you're coming back now and rather than getting a variance going in, you're coming back after the fact and asking for it. I mean, I, I believe, I mean, the car didn't fit in there. And, and it looks like you have part of the foundation already in on the side yard, on the, on the, on the south side, looks like that little bit in the photograph, looks like a raised portion. So you've already made provisions for it, but it's, it's fine. I mean, I don't, I don't have a problem with it, but I just, I just think it's, it's coming back in after the fact and asking for something that, that should have been done initially.
If, if I could address that briefly. When we designed the house and started construction, the municipality was still in the process of revising the zoning requirements and zoning rules. I attended a lot of meetings and, you know, we're trying to figure out how it was going to come out, what was going to be allowed. So for example, that five foot, moving at five feet to the side yard was something that provided benefit for us. But we didn't know whether it was going to be permitted by the changes or not permitted. And we needed to get construction going and the like. So we've been debating that ourselves, whether, you know, we should have stopped the process and come in, but it's what it is.
Okay, I mean, so was your intent to enclose it to start with? It's fine. That was my only question. No other board comments? Okay, let's open it up to the public. Claudia, do we have anybody who wants to speak on this application? I'm sorry?
There's no one.
Okay, we'll close the public portion and Ryan, would you like to say?
Again, very briefly, thanks for sticking with us tonight. It's, this is something that either, you know, not going to pretend to be a planner here tonight after Jim has left. But, you know, under the C one or C two, it's, you heard about the constrained site and the uniqueness of the ease, rear easement system, you know, from the C two perspective. There's a lot of pieces that this hit and come close to, especially with the changes in the neighborhood character ordinance. Ultimately, attached garages did not get the relief from rear setback that detached garages do receive, but, you know, the, the incentives and the interest in the, the new parts of the code and having the rear facing and the rear garage elements are there and are present, you know, throughout the, throughout the, the plan, and this, this hits those. And by, you know, the alternative would have been to have a lot more impervious coverage and a, and a, and a long driveway that faces the wrong way. And, and this is really the only way to do it. And Chairman Cohen, you asked a very, very pointed question. And, you know, the, the applicant was faced between waiting out for the final rules and awaiting and putting another year or so on before they can move in or going with what they knew at the time. And, and here we are.
Okay, no, I appreciate your honesty. It just appeared to me that that was the case, so. Okay. Let's go into executive session. Do any of the board members have any? Do any of the board members have any questions?
I think, I'll just say, let's see, Steve, I kind of had the same question you had. I got some relief in the beginning because I think Derek didn't take issue. He even said the intent was probably to always attach it, and there was these easement problems, and, you know, if he had objected to it, I might have, you know, given me more pause. And I do think that big easement was probably, the turnaround was, firemen lived in that area and part, I think even owned that land, and they probably brought the fire truck home with them at night, and therefore you got that big easement back there. And we, you know, a neighboring property a couple lots away, remember, was in here, the Wigan Street.
Yes.
But anyway, yeah, I think I got some, as I say, some comfort from Jared, Derek's presentation, so.
Good. No, I'm comfortable with it. I think it's a nice house, and I think the attached garage makes a lot of sense. Okay, does somebody, any other comments, or if there are none, does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Approval of the variances as a C2. I think that's it. There's no conditions.
Yeah, I don't think there are either. Okay, all right, anybody just want to second that?
I'll second it.
Okay. Oh, I should have asked if Ryan, you wanted to say anything in closing?
I did.
He did.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Claudia?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Coulson?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Fiver?
Yes.
Phil Vanis?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes, but isn't Mr. Tannenbaum still here?
I'm still here.
Oh, I can't, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I didn't hear anything, so yes, my vote is yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I guess, thank you.
Thank you for sticking with us late tonight. Much appreciated. I know you still have resolutions to do, but appreciated giving it your.
Okay, board members, we have, we have a couple little things to do. We have the minutes to approve of the June 17th.
Steve?
Yes.
Excuse me, do we need the court reporter for this?
No.
I don't believe we do, do we?
No.
No, okay.
Thanks, Lisa.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay, so we have the June 17th minutes, has, we have draft copied, has everybody looked at them? And it's, does somebody want to make a motion? If there are any, no corrections, if somebody wants to make a motion?
I'm over approval. Michael Floyd.
Second, Nick Calvanis.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Phil Vanis?
Yes.
Phil Vanis?
Yes.
Phil Vanis?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Fiver?
Yes.
Phil Vanis?
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 Yes.
Okay, now on to the resolutions. The first one will be 15 Aiken, oh no, what am I saying? It's.
Pretty Brook?
Pretty Brook. It is case number Z1919-792. This is a bifurcated use variance. It's 219 Pretty Brook Road, block 3501, lot 6 and 7 in the R1 zone.
Board members, there was a revised version of this resolution circulated to you, which reflected some very minor changes that the applicant asked for. The changes were made to paragraph nine. If you, if you all had a chance to look at it, I won't go through those changes again, or if you can, if you prefer, I can highlight what they were.
If you, yeah, take.
Okay, it's all, it's paragraph nine, page three. The first change was to clarify that Kathy Knight is the chairman of the Capital Projects Committee for the club, not the property manager.
Thanks.
Second paragraph, we have a clarification that they have two paddle tennis courts, not one. And the last line in paragraph nine, clarification that the addition will have limited visibility from any public roads. Paragraph 10, a correction in the spelling of Mr. Fordham's name, and the only other change was a clarification on the roll call vote because Mr. Davidge recused himself. Those are the changes to the copy that you have in your package.
All right, board members, any questions or does somebody like to make a motion?
I'll move to approve. I think, I don't know if it matters, I think you said 219 Pretty Brook, but this is 229?
Oh, I'm sorry, it is 229.
Okay.
Yes, I wrote over it. I was making comments on the first application, hadn't wrote over it. Motion?
Yeah, I was moving to approve it, yeah.
Second?
I'll second, Nick Calvanis.
Okay. Claudia?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Coulson?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Fiver?
Yes.
Phil Vanis?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And Mr. Stein, he was also there, he voted for it.
I will vote yes on this.
Thank you.
Okay, next one is case number Z2020-840, 15 Aiken Avenue, block 5101, lot 26 in the R3 zone.
I move, we accept it, Schreiber.
You were not there, sir.
What?
July 29.
I withdraw my motion.
Wait, say that again, Claudia?
It's the meeting of July 29, and he was not there.
It says I resecond it.
Yeah, Claudia, wasn't this the 22nd?
I have, I'm looking at 114 Elm Road, is that what we're looking at?
No, we're doing 15 Aiken.
I'm sorry.
Okay, in that case, I put my motion back in to accept.
Go ahead.
I'll second it. Eve Coulson?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Coulson?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Fiver?
Yes.
Emma Bond?
Yes.
Phil Vanis?
Yes.
Okay, 114 Elm, okay, it's case Z2020-864, block 9.01, lot 9.
Board members, the applicant's attorney asked for a minor change on paragraph six on the first page, the second line, he would like it to begin with a gable roof overhang, and then the very last line, I'm sorry, a gable roof overhang and a covered entrance overhang on the existing single-family residence, and some of the rest of the sentence is the same. So that was a request I received from Mr. Lutizzi.
I wasn't there, so I can't say anything, but somebody else could.
Hey, somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Michael Floyd to approve.
Thank you.
Well.
Second?
Who is that?
I'll second. Oh, you second.
Okay.
I'm sorry, who's second?
Bernice.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Emma Bond?
Yes.
Phil Vanis?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and last but not least, case Z1919-789, 66 to 68 Wigan Street, block 2803, lot 52, in the R4 zone.
Did we do that one already?
We did that already.
Yeah, we did that.
Put that one first.
Yeah.
Put that one first, I'm sorry. I wonder, I wonder I can't find it. I put it in another pile. Well, we're done.
Can I ask a question? I don't want to prolong this any more than we have to, but I don't understand the, what the council just did, what Mr. Floyd spoke about. Can somebody explain that to us?
Actually, Mr. Schreiber, I anticipate, I assume you're talking about.
The single.
Accessory drawing. I am going to be asking for a special closed session meeting, and I was going to circulate something to you tomorrow to explain why I would like to have that session with you, and I think that we would touch on then the answer to your question.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, that was a, yes. It was an interesting case.
Well, it sounded like it, that's why, but I, I still don't understand it. That's why, you know, I'd like to hear more about it.
Let, I guess.
But we don't need to go into it tonight.
Correct.
Okay, good. All right, so we're done, and we'll do this again next month. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, Mr.